Hello, it's September twenty-third at one P M. This is a work session with the Lake County Commissioners. And starting at one o'clock, we have a preliminary budget work session led by Candace Brians, our county manager. And perhaps Willin?
Yes, he will be helping. Liz was originally gonna be part of the presentation, but she is out sick. So we're using the three staff here who are not out sick this meeting. Um, so we wanted to, if you'll give me just a second, I'm gonna share my screen. So everyone can see here. Alright, so we wanted to walk you guys through um your budget. And also through um the documents that we sent out to each department. Um, so this is, and Will typed up um a copy of the memo with some shots of the information in there too. Um, so we've not really had a budget process like this in the past. This is the first time we've used this budget process. So every department was sent out the same uh document that you're looking at right now. And um they used it to help inform their budget decisions. We, we know that next year, we have already identified a few changes we will make, but wanted to walk you guys through the process that we use for other departments to come up with their budget. And we've already done a prelim for years, but if we would like to change anything, you can certainly have that opportunity to do that now. Um, so these are your revenues. Um, we budget for revenues and expenses separately. And government accounting, we want um to see that your, you know, your revenues and your expenses, when you look at the budget overall, our revenues and our expenses will be equal. We don't wanna say that we have budgeted more expenses than revenues we actually would have. Because you're in the general fund, you'll notice you don't have a lot of revenues, and you're gonna have more expenses than revenues. Um, but you're in the general funds, so the general fund covers your uh revenues. You don't really have any other revenues other than um a little bit from this I G A with uh Algora that brings in a few revenues for you guys, so. You don't have any grants, but if you did, and other departments do, what we have asked for is that people put the grant name, the details of the grant, the grant award, if there's a match, um the total amount, uh if it's a reimbursement, we wanna know the amount. And if it is a multi-year grant, uh we have them indicate that um in this tab. So that every grant that people have would have a new tab, right? So if you have more than one grant, you're gonna have a grant multiple tabs. Uh, also, we wanna make sure that if the person managing that budget leaves us, we know the grant exists and that we have a budget for it in the foreseeable future. So this is really a good way for us to keep track of, is there a new grant? If we have old grants, we can see that they're budgeted for. And anytime people are asking to apply for a grant, we're asking to provide uh a budget for it and a multi-year budget. So we have all of that information documented in Airtable. So if someone leaves us, it's not like knowledge of the grant goes out the window and it doesn't get budgeted for appropriately, which I think was an area that we all recognize in finance, um we wanted to improve on. Let me make this just a little smaller. So we can see it on the page. Okay, so in the next tab are your expenses. And this is an area that I think we've already identified. We um want to make some updates for next year. So every department received their account codes, what category it falls into, and an account description. Then we can see your twenty-twenty-three activity and twenty-twenty-four activity. And then twenty-twenty-five. Can you remind me, Will, you pulled year-to-date for me, right?
It was year-to-date when it was sent out to all the departments.
Through which month?
Through August.
Thank you.
Was when they first went out.
Appreciate that. And then what we have slated for your twenty-twenty-six budget, using prior years to help us inform what we would budget for. And then also being able to look at your actuals and say, what the heck have we been paying for in this category? If someone looked back and thought, oh, that's not what I, I thought I had been doing. So it gave us a really good opportunity to sit down with every department director and really drill into every one of their expenses to say, okay, what have you been actually paying for in this category? Does it make sense here, or does it make sense to move it elsewhere? It also helps us identify account codes that we haven't used for multiple years, but have existed. And we realize we wanna clean those things up. So you'll notice that anything that hasn't been used for multiple years, we're trying to deactivate those so they don't show up in our list of reports and don't accidentally get used when people are trying to code invoices, especially if we haven't used them in the past. So we did not put a lot of money in your contingency. We can certainly change that, uh if you would like to. You can see that we really haven't put a lot in there. Um, I think what has happened in commissioner budgets in the past is, is they would have agreements going to their personal emails, you know, because we made a shift from them managing everything to the county manager and a finance team managing things. So then we would have agreements that would pop up out of nowhere, and you'd need emergency funds to put towards that expense, because you forgot the I G A existed. We've had a few exciting finds this year as we found I G As that really, oh, that was getting sent to old commissioner. And then it raps at us in finance, we try to figure out adjusting the budget to account for it. So we put fifteen thousand in there.
Um, I know this is a silly question, but just a follow-up on that. When a commissioner permanently is no longer working here, does an automatic reply get put onto that? Or does it just get canceled? Like, does it get an automatic, like, return to sender, because it's, doesn't exist anymore?
I would guess that has not happened in the past, but we can work on having a process for when that happens.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yep. Yeah, cuz I mean, I know once people's accounts are deactivated,
um, people continue to send stuff to it, so I don't know, I'll have to work with I T to understand that piece a little better.
Yeah.
What about our um conferences, bi-annual conferences?
Travel and transportation. Um, nine-twenty-eight.
So this weed control contract uh with Chiefy, they just reached out to me and said, hey, do we have an I G A for this? It just seems like you pay us. And we do, and there is an I G A, but it's from twenty-twenty-two. So this is something that I actually just emailed to Matt today and said, we probably wanna get this in front of commissioners. But we did at least include it, because we do have to manage noxious weeds. So we wanna make sure money's in there for it, but it does beg the question of, if it's that old and they are asking for us to send an executed copy, maybe it's tender, this is that thing. Um, so we put that in there. Do you think weed control, considering it's that old, it makes sense it's in your budget? But it honestly begs the question of, if we have someone in a natural resource or open space role, would it make sense to go there? We've also had some conversations, really before we got walked in here. Perhaps we budget for all I G As in the same set of accounts, so we can see this to your look back and recognize, oh, hey, no one budgeted money for this I G A that actually exists. And so we have the question of, and Willin, I will work with Matt and have some more discussions. Maybe it does make sense to budget for them all in one place instead of spread out for departments. So we can notice, oh, we paid this for five years and, and now we see nothing budgeted. That's a good indicator to revisit the I G A. So I think we've been having some conversations about maybe making that change this year. Okay, so you can see your total here. Alright, so this next category is your personnel expenses. Um, this is an estimate for twenty-twenty-six, B O C C payroll. Um, we are using a tool this year called positional budgeting in the finance and H R team that has their last meeting, I think it's this Thursday.
Yeah, the, the final one will be ready this Thursday.
So we have not been using the positional budgeting module. And Tyler, uh mainly, no one recognized that it wasn't turned on until I was working with our rep this year, and I was like, we're paying for this, would you please turn it on? It allows us to model different scenarios of staffing, any changes we wanna try to make, any thoughts we think we'll have about next year. And really, we'll get a better estimate using positional budgeting. We'll have finalized payroll numbers, really um at the beginning of December, end of November, when we get finalized cost for insurance, et cetera. So we will get this dialed as closely as possible with an estimated increase, because we've been given that estimate, but wanna really dial that number in with the actuals.
You said end of November? Wow.
It's pretty close, but we, we're usually, looking at like previous estimates, they're usually pretty close to where we wanna be. And I was actually just talking with Crystal at the city, and they're also trying to get dialed in the correct numbers. We don't kind of have to wait, wait on insurance. So this is the estimate we have for you guys.
Candace, who was under our department in twenty-twenty?
Four.
Four, that isn't anymore.
I believe it was just the old commissioners were in there, and they had maybe been there for a while, because I think you guys have a built-in.
Increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It follows the schedule.
And also, they have different um insurance elections, you know, than you guys do.
Yeah.
Um, we are trying to make sure we budget for everyone to take the max coverage, but know that you guys may or may not choose to do that. Really just depends on your personal life situations, but we wanna make sure we cover what everyone could choose. Okay, next are our travel and transportation. We've got thirty-five hundred in there. I do um, I do think if you guys want more research, we can do that. Um, sorry, well, can't see, is that the Lura distribution?
Yeah.
We took an estimate based on prior years, but are gonna get an update from the assessor, so we get a for-sure number for you guys. This is prelim, by the way.
We get a Lura distribution?
It is an expense that kind of has come out of your bucket every year, so you don't get one.
I mean, yeah, yeah, but we would get, the idea is that Lura remits, and then we have to pay back a certain amount based on the percentage that was agreed to, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, but it gets paid out of your budget, because the revenues for it just come into the general fund. You just don't see it on your revenue side. But they're all in the general fund, we're just pulling out your.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it should be more, it'll be interesting. But it's, so it's not, where does the revenue go in, what line item does that go in?
I'd have to ask Patrick where he receives the Lura receipts.
Yeah, through the treasury.
I know, what line item in the general fund does it go into?
I'll, I'll pull it up for you and send it to you.
Okay. It's just that if it's coming out of ours, why wouldn't it go into ours that we then have to disperse? So like, which department does it go into?
I'll have to look at Patrick's account codes, but it doesn't necessarily go into your revenue bucket, because everything you pay is actually covered out of the full general fund. So we didn't put the whole general fund, we are just pulling out a subset of what you spend out of.
Okay, okay.
So it does offset, it still does offset the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Bucket, because you're in a fund together.
Okay.
Um, dues and subscriptions, there are a couple of different things that fall in there. Um, I can pull, I'll pull up the expense sheet here in a minute, because we did pull out twenty-four um expenses and revenues.
That's a diff, that's a big difference from last year.
I think you guys are, A, I think we've gotten really good at our accounting and recognizing where to put the correct things. Like, if things are operational, they go on an operations budget, not just chucked in the commissioners, because the, the invoice was emailed to one of you.
Got it.
Or used to be, and we're recognizing we really need to budget for and spin things in the right place. I think that's just us growing as a, a budgeting group. Um, we didn't put any posted in here, but we certainly can. Um, I think some of these are spots to ask for some feedback from you guys.
That C O P expense comes out of our?
It does.
That's annual?
It is, and this last year, it was thrown in professional services, which makes no sense whatsoever. So we are creating an actual C O P expense account, so we can track that we are paying the debt. So our general fund is essentially paying it, we wanna track it in one place, so we actually have a look back. When it's lumped into your pro services, we don't know if you're getting the windows cleaned or if you're, what, you know, what professional service you're paying for versus how much debt. And honestly, we really should be paying attention to our debt service, the um, the actual payment schedule. So we, when we pay that expense every year, Will and I have the documents for the C O P that talk about how long it will be in place, how much interest we're paying, um, and can actually attach that payment schedule to the vendor we're paying. So it's a block financial, and it helps us really start to track our, the actual documents, explain why on earth we're paying somebody. So that is something Will and I actually have started doing, is attaching to every vendor and payment. The agreement has to be attached to the vendor, so we know why we're paying somebody, and we have that historical record, and that wasn't really utilized previously.
Can you just remind me, is that a twenty-year?
Yes, with two payments per year.
But they totaled five-thirty-eight. The payments are half that.
It moves a little bit, but yes, in general, that's about the payment. Each year is a bit different because of the amortization.
Oh.
Um, interest comes first, it's paid bi-annually, and then the um principal payment is made on November fifteenth.
Oh, I see.
So it's June fifteenth and November fifteenth.
So you can't just take five-thirty-eight and multiply it by twenty years to see what the actual cost of the eight years is?
But it is, do have the option to pay it off early without penalty, which was a big thing Candace was looking at.
Yeah.
If needed, if you don't use something or a portion of it, well, there's a no penalty payback.
Why are we in the red? For that courthouse renovation?
What do you mean?
Why are we in the red on advertising and public notices for the year?
I'm sure you just didn't have it budgeted for.
Okay. Um, so where, so things like postage, advertising, website, wouldn't all, isn't all of that kind of moved into communications? Like, what part of that would be different for us versus, or legal fees? Like, why would we have those specifically in ours versus the department?
So, a couple of reasons. If you don't have a person in your department, managing your department, and especially for you guys, you wanna be able to do advertising and public notices, it helps us really make sure you've got the money there for you. Um, I would say that the comms department, what's in the comms department, not building your budget, then it becomes really not a man ship. And you guys wanna be able to actually ask for the things that you want to do. I think it helps us make sure that you have that available. If you wanna use your P card for it, you can actually code it to the right account code. I think this is really one of the first times, I, I mean, I don't know, because I'm pretty new to the county, I don't know what the commissioners did before. I honestly, it seems like um the county manager codes a lot of your stuff, which is totally fine. But I also want you guys to have the ability to say, hey, we actually want to do this thing, and have a spot for it that's yours.
Right, okay.
And I do help code a lot of the invoices for you guys or do approvals, you know, if needed. But usually want you guys to be able to actually have some money in there to do those things.
Well, like coronavirus relief fund, I'm assuming that there, that we know there's no, nothing left, so wouldn't that be one of the retired lines, if you will?
Yes, it will be after we finish reporting for this year, because I did the close-out reports for that.
Okay, and then legal fees, let's use legal fees as an example. Would you imagine us having money in there? Or my impression from our, one of our initial budget conversations is that we wanted a lot of the legal fees to all go under legal. So do you see us ever using that again for your system?
We can deactivate it.
Okay.
For sure. Do you want me to?
Sure, I only if it helps the syst, like, if we're not actually putting legal fees in our section, and we would want to put it under a different department, great. Or like website, we don't have our own website.
Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't that go under the comms or wherever, operations? Just based on the system that you were, that you proposed?
I think for website development, we can definitely put that in the I T or comms budget.
Right, right.
Um.
Or yours, right, with the new executive, yeah?
Yeah. Um, so we can deactivate that, and Will, Will and I are gonna go sit down and work on these, so we'll just make sure we go through and do that. I think there is a question of, I don't know, would you ever have a need for any other type of webpage or website that would be different from what we currently have? And would you want to ask for something? So I don't know if that would ever happen, if there's a world where that happens. But we can always deactivate the account.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. So we didn't put anything in here for repair or maintenance of vehicles or utilities. We can deactivate these, but we really want to make sure we're, part, partially, we've shown these in the back years, because we need to be able to pull that information to budget for them in the appropriate department. We're tr, really trying to get to where people don't have their own Verizon account. They don't have their own, historically, you've had people budget and pay for utilities to the space they're in. And other than D H S, which actually needs to record those, because they get state allocations for particular types of things, we're really moving all of these things into the appropriate department that they live in. So utilities don't fall under each department, that they're more of like ops covers those kinds of things. And we can say, hey, this is what we spend on utilities total, instead of dumping it in your buckets. You'll notice we didn't budget anything, um, and we can deactivate anything not budgeted for.
Okay, Candace, just so I, you know, this year, like with the fleet,
Mm-hmm.
Nobody budgeted for that.
Yeah, it's budgeted this year.
I know, I love that. I'm just saying, with these lines gone from certain departments, what is there to make sure that it's triggered, that they talk to the other departments to make sure that that thing is in their budget?
Like, who's gonna be responsible for remembering fleet?
Yeah, or who's gonna be responsible for remembering computers? Or who's gonna be responsible for remembering legal services?
Well, A, right now, we're ultimately responsible. But B, trying to make sure that our department directors are naming those. And part of moving to this budget process is saying, oh, yeah, we budgeted for that thing thirty years ago. And for the last two years, we probably shouldn't leave it.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Where is it?
What you're saying is just your account codes pulled out, and that's what a director sees, right?
Right.
Will and I are looking at every G L code we have in the whole county with a look back, and we can see, oh, my gosh, no one budgeted for this thing. And we do that at a top level, and when I'm presenting the full budget to you guys, we'll be looking at it kind of in departments grouped, so you'll be seeing a fuller view. It'll still be chunked out just a little bit, so we're not running through hundreds of account codes, but you'll be able to see everybody that is operating um and more of the operations budget, like I T, finance, myself, commissioners. It kind of follows the budget book and how they've grouped departments. If you look at that first page, it shows you the buckets we group people into, and we'll be looking at all of those together when we run through the budget presentations, so you can actually ask questions about what's in there, or do you have questions about why is there so much somewhere? And we'll be able to answer those questions for you guys. But historically, I don't know, Adam, you've done budgets before, have you ever had a look back like this before?
Where we looked back multiple years?
Yeah. Because I don't know what the process was before I arrived.
Yeah, it, it was, it came from finance, um, the numbers, and uh, yeah, it was expenses and revenues. But it, there, it was an exercise insofar as trying to see major changes, but it wasn't, um, it was provided by finance, there wasn't a lot of discussion. There was no discussion with department directors around where did these numbers come from? It was just sort of like a, it's in there for commissioners per usual to understand it. The numbers look very different.
Yeah.
But it never was a conversation.
And we would like for you to manage their budgets, i.e. they know where they're recording things and why they're recording them there. Or they could, they'll notice if something has been recorded in the wrong space, they know it, and they can tell us, hey, that got recorded on the wrong line, can you please move it? And I think without that conversation, a director can't help inform where something should have gone, because they don't know where it was budgeted for. So that's a big part of us moving towards actually sending this document out.
So you all are looking at, I'm just gonna use an example and you tell me if it's correct. Say Bryce is.
Waterbury Department.
Yeah, Waterbury. So he's got legal fees in there for the last two years that is like fifty thousand dollars. And then he budgets no money in there, because the new change is that it will be in the legal department.
Yeah.
You all are looking at like, oh, there's nothing budgeted here this year for Bryce, let me double-check that it got into.
Yes.
Love it, that's a lot.
So as we sat down with every department, yours doesn't have a lot of notes, because we're just doing it with you, right? And we know the things that we're gonna change, but you see these notes. We sat down, much to everyone's chagrin, and made very lengthy notes about why we moved everything we moved and where it needed to end up, because we use those notes to inform us getting our spreadsheet together to upload into Tyler. And so this creates a prelim for us. And then we go back and check ad nauseam that we haven't missed any changes.
Okay.
Um, so other things people got in their packet, and I'm just gonna show it to you, because we also got this, and it'd be nice for you to understand. Um, we gave them, you know, their chart of accounts. We gave them the opportunity to explain to us if they would like for things to show up differently. So in, in exciting times, um, people had access to make new accounts, and sometimes they just copied an existing account without paying attention to the category assigned to it. So we have a lot of people who, if, if you take, let's say, training, right? This actually falls into the training and education category. If you copy this account for something that has nothing to do with training and education and fail to notice that you need to change the category, you could have personnel, professional services, all falling in the training and education bucket, because you didn't notice that in Tyler, you're just copying the same account over and over, and they're different. So one of the big things we got from staff this year was, okay, let's start to dial in where we want category descriptions to show up, so we can try to get those changed. Um, and also have some guidance as finance, that if something is a personnel benefit, you cannot throw in other expenses. Um, so really trying to get some of these things cleaned up. So we included people's chart of accounts to get some of those items cleaned up. If you have requests for a new personnel person, we give you a place to do it. You can ask for it, you need to explain, like, what is the salary, what are the benefits? Um, what's the total request? You need a justification and why you think it's valid. Or other things people put in here is if they wanted to change um a pay rate for a position, et cetera. Those kind of staffing changes go in here, if they needed more than one tab, they could have one. Um, and then capital budget request. And we use these to kind of start to build a list. So we'll sit down with um, together, Will and I will, after we get through prelims, and then look at our capital requests. Some of them will say, great, this looks like it's doable, we'll go ahead and work it into some of these budget. Some of them are huge, and then they become a bigger, um, a bigger discussion about, okay, do multiple departments need this item?
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the requests we have had for multiple different parties is about cameras. So then the question becomes, well, is this capital request feasible for next year? Is it not? Are there eighteen departments asking for it? Maybe it is feasible if we combine the request to say, hey, actually, the whole county needs new cameras. So that helps us inform the capital. So that helps us inform the capital budget request that we'll bring forward to you guys to say, hey, this is what we've been asked for. And the answer may be, hey, we need a little more information about what we currently have before we can say yay or nay to something. But this at least helps us identify are multiple people asking for the same thing? And if they are, what is the cost savings to do it collectively instead of each person going out and sourcing a difference of cameras, radios, et cetera? I think that this is all I have for you guys on this front.
Cool, how do you want us to inform our budget?
Honestly, there's not really much to be done, cause there's not a lot in there. I think it's just on that front tab, if you guys want any changes, so I'm trying to get to it without.
I know. Oh, stop.
Stop. There we go. What would be really great is if you want any of these expense items changed.
Yeah.
We would like to know that now, and we'll make the notes to change it and make sure it's updated before we put your prelim.
Um, well, the travel and transportation versus the, um. Oh my gosh, training and education.
Yeah.
Do you want those two separate, like if we're traveling for training and education?
That's fine, goes on travel.
They're two separate things, okay.
Transportation is you getting there, the actual education piece is the cost of attendance to the event.
Okay, great.
And if for some reason you pay for an event, that includes the lodging, they usually break it down on your bill. We can of course code things to multiple account lines based on the total amount.
Okay. And do we know what the water expenditures was? Sorry if you already said that, I still have a little COVID brain at the very top.
From the revenues? My understanding, Will can help me with this for the water expenditures, what went in there this last year?
The actual expenses, not the, not the.
Oh, not the revenue.
Yeah. At the very top. Uh, yes, line six.
Those historical expenses were when the previous board of commissioners were setting up the water enterprise fund. Previously, um, Bryce was in the commissioners, and then he was moved, um, under. From CPD to the commissioners, then to Tim, and it was a multi-year, under Tim, the Lake County manager. Um, and then it was a two-year process to get all the agreements, um, to get a working plan. So that Lake County now has the water enterprise fund, and will have the ability to sell augmented wells.
Right.
That's the end goal. So those historical expenses, um, were in the BOCC because at the time, the commissioners were actively managing it with Tim.
Got it.
During its transition.
Yeah, okay. This is lovely.
I do wanna say, I put a note down here, so I wanna mention it. We had a land purchase earlier this year in which you guys had nine hundred fifty thousand dollars put into your pro services budget. It does seem like we are working through the process to make that parcel appropriate to purchase. Which would have already happened, but it hasn't happened. If that does not happen by the end of FY twenty twenty five, we will have to put that in your budget.
Okay.
I imagine Will and I will likely not put it in pro services because that doesn't seem appropriate for that. Um, can't, you know, putting it in pro services, which is where it's budgeted for. It's an asset, and I don't think that's an appropriate place to record the purchase of an asset. Um, so I think we would likely create a new line, or, um, potentially have the discussion of, does it go in to our assets? Instead of coming out of the commissioners budget line item, this was, this is prior to us being in the seats where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
It's what we were told to do, so we do it. But we do wanna make sure we budget for things appropriately, so we can actually account for assets.
Are you proposing doing an asset category or an asset?
We do have one.
Yeah.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it's just not where it got budgeted for, so right now, this year, that's where it's budgeted. But next year, we would like, we would still can make sure it's in the budget, but I'm just letting you know, right now, that's where it's budgeted for.
Okay.
But if it doesn't get spent, we would probably clean that up.
Where's the real purchase?
It's the one with the school.
Okay.
So there's a spark.
Yeah.
A spark.
What's, uh, what's, what would be an example of our fifteen thousand dollar contingency? Says we each get five thousand dollars, what would we use that money for?
So you might have something unplanned that comes up, um, what they've done in the past, quite honestly.
Re-roofing, the annex.
Yeah.
Came out of the, came out of the commissioners in the past.
We have to agree on it, it's fifteen thousand each.
That's just how it's calculated.
Yeah.
An historical example of that would be the Mountain West Sewer Rebuild Plan. That was paid out of the Board of Commissioners contingency line as well.
And we try not to do that, I mean, a contingency really is like emergencies, and most of those can be recorded appropriately in the correct place, like replacing a roof, that can be a capital improvement, right? I just think the knowledge of exactly where things should live, partially, it's just where people wanna see something, right? But we really wanna try to find, to follow Gatsby and GAAP accounting principles to record things where they really should go.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds reasonable.
A bit.
But I did wanna point out that, that large amount, that if it doesn't get expensed this year, we will definitely do that. We wanna record the COP, where you can actually track it by itself, not in your pro services.
Yeah.
Um, which is new. One thing we'll do differently next year is we wanna make sure that you can see your two-year look back. And one thing that people said would have been helpful, and we agree, um, is that we have twenty twenty five activity, but then we also have a bucket for twenty twenty five budgeted, so you can see, you know.
How much are we, how close are we?
Yeah, closer we, and do we wanna change what we've budgeted? And we've been pulling up what's been budgeted for, plus we worked through this, but we recognize that needs to be a line item we add in addition to the twenty twenty six budget, what do we wanna do?
Can we also have a percentage?
Sure.
That helps my brain, it was the percentage.
The percent spin?
Yeah, thank you.
That's all we have for you guys.
Yeah, appreciate it.
But we have gone through with every department, really asked, like, do you wanna see something different? What's not being recorded where you want it, et cetera, so we can start to clear some of these things up and ask that, can't, that directors aren't really managing.
Our budget is huge.
Mm-hmm.
One point one million dollars is a lot for our department. And I get that the COP really blows it out of the water, but even.
It's really got gifted.
I mean, even, even eight hundred, no, seven hundred thousand? No, six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money.
It is within the grand scheme of full budget if it is a small percentage.
I know, I'm just saying.
That makes you feel any.
Still huge. It's huge for three people who don't do, do.
Yeah.
The work, you know? That's the OP really confuses it, but it's still a lot of money at six hundred thousand.
We just think throwing it in your pro services, it doesn't make any sense and, and doesn't really show the true picture. We're paying off a debt we took on to improve the project.
Totally.
Or improve the mountain.
Is that the line credit, the CPD, is that structured? Yeah. It's the functional equivalent in Colorado that complies with Tabor.
Yeah.
So it's a certificate of participation, and ultimately, the courthouse is the collateral. That was a point of discussion, getting a certificate of participation, just being approved for it, which isn't guaranteed with a high credit rating and low interest, that took, mm, better part of a year.
Yeah. Um, I will, I do wanna give credit where credit is due. Will holds a lot of late nights with me on teams. Um, he has put it so, and, you know, Liz has helped with these sheets too, but our finance team and Will has really, we've put a lot of time and effort into this budget process and really having people own their budgets, getting it cleaned up, cleaning up just some things that, where they've been recorded, hasn't always been clear. Attaching agreements to vendors we pay. It has been tracking grants correctly, getting the grant agreement documents attached to every payment, attached to the grant, get the grants coded by number. We have spent a lot of time and energy, and I just wanna say thanks to Will, cause really a lot of this huge lift has been his extra work to get it done, so I really, th- this is not a.
Thank you, Will.
Right on.
I can just say that this is the first time in four years that I actually trust the budget process.
That's huge, that's huge.
And like Adam's department, it's two different departments, and they were co-mingled in the past.
Yeah.
Um, and finally getting them all fixed with all the updates, they're saved in Tyler right now. And then it gives, um, the commissioners and Candace, when you make changes all the way up to December fifteenth, we just push a button, put it in, and the budget's in, it's in statistical process control, right?
Yeah.
It's like a commercial budget. So it's the first year for the county, and like Candace was saying, um, in the past, they didn't do it line by line, which used to be the first thing you would have to do to see what happened in the past. It was done on memory and departmental knowledge. So it's actually gonna be much easier for Candace and the commissioners to manage the budget because you have full visibility to everything, like it's in there now, for example.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the payroll, it's just like what Candace said, um, the county never used positional budgeting. So instead of having me manually calc it for each person and put it here and there.
Oh my god.
You do tabular calculations the way you're supposed to in the database, which the county pays for, right? And then you can put in your scenarios for cola, and you get your decision points for the Christmas bonus. Do you want that included? Do you wanna budget it?
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna take it out? Where instead of doing it manually, which is very, it takes a long time, you just do a couple switches and re-update it. That's the, the big difference.
It's huge. And you don't miss, and you don't miss things, cause it's, you're not like fussing with, with summations or calculations.
Yes, that's the big.
Like in a spreadsheet, that's, that is one of the questions that I had. So in this spreadsheet, like the, um, how much of it, I've never, I don't know if this is part of Tyler or if it's actually just an Excel doc, but how much of it is locked and inedible, like the account codes? Or can somebody go in there and accidentally?
Oh, no, we have fields locked.
Okay, cool, just, just a curiosity. Like only some of this is editable.
Control of their spreadsheet, they're not. And, um.
Awesome.
A lot of the spreadsheets, uh, quite frankly, if just Will is, was with any spreadsheet, but a lot of our spreadsheets are directly linked to Tyler, so you push an update, and they're pulling in the data directly from Tyler. Which is great, that we have someone with that level of Excel skill, because I think in the past, it was entered by hand. And it's just too, it's too much data and information to not make it stick.
Mm-hmm.
So. I know we're done a little early, but that's all, all we have.
Can I ask a quick question? So you're gonna present all these budgets and then what, what are we gonna do? Yeah.
You're gonna ask questions, you're gonna say if you want anything changed, you're gonna say.
So we can actually make change, we can say, we think that's way too high, we think that's too low, we'd like to.
I'd say probably the biggest thing we can't change a lot of is the payroll piece, because those represent actual humans that already work for us. Um, you know.
And will, will we see the, the request for new employees? When each department makes a, makes a, makes their budget, presents the budget to us and say, you really like three new employees, and they'll explain to us why and.
Yeah.
So, okay.
We don't have many requests, cause like, I, it's like, no.
And you guys have a lot of requests for capital projects?
Uh, I need to run through all of them, but I don't think there were a time.
There's some, but not like last year.
No, like last year, just one of the first things I experienced, I was like, this is wild, and it's happening December fourteenth, one of the months due on the fifteenth.
But Michael will make requests for more.
Yes, he has won a huge one for the landfill, it's three million dollars. And I said, that's probably not in next year's budget, but we want it to be on our radar. So we can know, like we, at some point, we do actually have to do that, and to have a plan for it.
Wouldn't you think that'd be included, I'm glad it'll be like talked about and starting now? Um, wouldn't that also be in the asset management plan, once we've hired somebody who can start doing that inventory and?
You are correct.
Okay, great. That won't be sep, like the landfill, wouldn't it be separate from like the library building?
In terms of capital requests, no, they'd all.
In terms of like asset.
Can I show you a dashboard that I wanna work towards?
Yeah.
Clearly, we need more data. A good dashboard and what we would like to build, once we have all the data about our.
Is there a timeline on the liner for the dump, the three million dollar liner?
I have to get the actual, um, timeline, timeline for Michael, oh my gosh, can't.
Can we, can we just try and put like, if it's ten years out, put some money into it every single year and lock it in? Just so you know, I asked Senator Bennett for the money.
Great, keep doing that.
That would be the perfect way, similar to the turf replacement.
Yeah.
Cause we know the useful life of it, it's effectively ten years.
It's also part of the asset management plan, where we'd be like, okay, we have this much money in deferred maintenance. Then we come up with these priorities of what needs to be fixed first, we start putting money aside for each one of those things every year.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I am, that's what I would require of an asset management plan.
Yeah, right. So that's what this is, and this is what we are working towards, but we really need to know what we have, so we know exactly all of the things we need to take care of. Um, so this is a pretty good example of one. So like then there's like the one-year plan total, this is just a Power BI dashboard. Um, what I really like though is that it breaks it down, you know, by each department. And then there's actually a list of all the things you need and what they plan to fix in this year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So we know the total amount that we're spending towards everything that needs to be redone, and you see it's done by department, which is great. But what I really love is that you can actually, you know, street paving and overland, who requested it? What department, what type, um, a description of their request, the project, uh, number, how it's gonna be recorded, um, when it's budgeted for, total budget for every year, so they're gonna put a certain amount towards it for each year. And it's gonna take a minute to get there, this is a lot of data we do not have. But the goal is to get to where we do have these one-year and multi-year plans with all of the departments, all of the capital projects we wanna, um, be doing. So we also keep ourselves accountable, or if we move it out a year, we budget for it in the next five years.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I want that so bad.
So we are, we are working to get there, which, you know, it's a pretty big lift, considering the lack of information we have. But we are really trying to work on understanding what do we have, so we can start planning for it.
Holy no.
Which is the first step. Yeah, I know, isn't this lovely?
It's really, it looks like, I feel like we've gone to a different country who's like, like years, I feel like we're in Japan. You know, they're just so good at infrastructure, this looks like a Japan spreadsheet.
Uh, to be fair, they have a phenomenal finance director who worked in finance for IBM, so.
Damn.
This is a pretty small budget, but also, I don't know, I, this is the goal for me. It's gonna take a minute to get there, but the first start is like, what on earth do we have, so we know what we need to do and how we budget for it, you know, into the future.
All right, question, how much did this project, just the data collection, planning, and then, uh, you know, like turning into documents, how much did that cost for BB?
I'm not sure, I would imagine they had some of the data already, um. I'm not sure, I would imagine they had some of the data already, um, they're pretty organized, but I would imagine, so this person was also their administrator before they became their finance director.
Yeah.
So he had a really good scope of like what they had. I know that the finance director before this, um, was a little more like, you know, things and spreadsheets still did a good job, but this is relatively new to them. Um, and I actually have a meeting set up to go sit down and talk about the development of this piece with them, so we can start to look towards that.
It'd be nice to, to budget for this, this year.
Yeah.
Not the whole thing, right, but obviously you've already got the RFP out for the.
Yep.
Asset.
Well, we're ready on Lingua to approve it and then it will be out.
Well, it will be out for the.
Data collection.
Data collection, yeah, so good. But then, then it would be great to be able to budget this year for next year for the next phase, once we have the data collection, where would that, what department would that be in?
Well, right now, I put a little bit of money in IT for this software, but I wanna make sure we really need this, and so that's why I'd like to go sit down with them. I budgeted for it, just to make sure we've got it.
Yeah.
But I notice a lot of people use this software and I really, I'd like to understand a few more things about it. Like when you click into one of these and you can see that the person who submitted it, what department, you know, what type of project is it? So this is where I'd like to know, is this part of the software that people put that in, or is it like someone is having to collect that via email and type it in?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanna understand the software a little bit better, and that's one of the big things is making sure that IT owns software and they're in the ops budget. But that IT owns this, so people have to vet the software and what it can do for them with an IT professional before just purchasing it.
Yeah.
So I did put a little bit of money in there for that.
Okay, so you've got some of this in Ops.
Yeah.
And obviously.
Candy did a walkthrough, but I wanna talk to a real human that uses it before.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Get your references straight.
Before opting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really cool, I've never seen that before.
It's stunning.
So this is where we're trying to head, it is gonna take a minute to get all of the information we need. And to start, you know, the process of, put your capital improvement request in here, if that's an option, I hope it is, it would make a lot of sense to me that it would be.
So these are requests, not.
Well, I think it must be approved request because it's in their actual one multi-year plan. And I'm sure it's up for debate each year, and I would imagine that this is actually tied to their accounting software.
Do you know how much, this is just Buena Vista's, do you know what their budget is?
I'm gonna start off the top of my head, but I think it's pretty, I think it's a bit smaller cuz it's just one town.
Right, so how is an eight point eight million in a one-year asset?
So they, I don't know if it's in here, but they actually have debt.
Square the buggers, they got debt?
Yep, debt's not bad.
No, it's.
As long as it's smart, it's managed well and the interest rates are good.
And it's not easy for a town to go into debt.
Yep.
The town of Buena Vista's twenty twenty-four annual budget was six point eight, six point nine in the general fund.
I don't understand how you can spend eight point eight.
So this is requested, doesn't mean it's approved yet.
Oh.
They're not there.
Current situation, is there a big checkup?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I guess I want.
To see what I, I get's approved.
No. Um, you tell me, tell me where this fits, my understanding of a capital management plan is that you have. You have the year-over-year understanding of what it takes to replace literally all parts of your operation and asset, right? And capital, and so you know how much it costs just to maintain what you have now, based on replacement over decades.
Yeah.
And so you can amortize that and understand your, your replacement costs for your entire thing. That's what I want to get to.
And that's what I think this is made up of, I would imagine that, so all of these dashboards that are, you can click into, they're actually linked to their, like, software.
Yeah.
Um, and so I would imagine what will happen is they'll vote on what they'll do, and actually something actual will become the one-year plan. And anything that didn't get done gets rolled over to the multi-year in the bucket of twenty twenty-six. But this at least helps inform, heck, this is what we need to be working towards.
I mean, it, if you do that math and that calculation, you end up inevitably learning that you can't have everything that you have and keep it.
Yeah.
And then you have to decide what you're going to get rid of because you literally, it doesn't pencil out.
Yeah.
And it looks like Buena Vista doesn't pencil out. If all of their capital costs.
Oh, I'm sure there are things that they don't get to do every year that they have to roll over, if they have to ask themselves, do we keep it, do we, I mean, they had a fire department that they operated forever. And it finally just became so, it didn't make a lot of sense, it wasn't really feasible.
Right.
So then they sold the fire station, liquidated that, and you know, joined in with another entity.
Yeah.
It's like every year, you do have these huge expenses that you have to ask yourself, does this make the most sense? Is this, can you do it, is it the best use of our funds? And that's really what this type of planning helps inform, is so you're not just shooting from the hip hoping you made the right decision, but you have data to drag with you.
I love it, I want it.
We're working on it.
I want Level to have it too.
We will get there, it's, we've already cleaned up just a lot. Will and I might need to have shorter hours at some point in our life, but we're gonna get there.
It's coming. Got a timeline in my office.
It's coming, well.
Yeah, one of the really good thing of Candace's plan is after the budget is approved on, was it the twelfth of December?
Fifteenth.
Or the fifteenth for the final one, when you pick the mills. Then, um, everything's in place to make the five-year plan.
Yeah.
Put it, save it formally, right?
Mm-hmm.
And with that, it would carry the amounts you put into, say, the turf replacement.
Mm-hmm.
So that grows year-over-year, and even though it seems backwards, that's what feeds the capital asset planning.
Yeah.
Because you know what's available each year.
Yeah.
So that extra, it gives you the ability, it'll give Candace the ability to look at it pragmatically. And say, given these reasonable estimates for expenses related to all the people that work for Lake County. Here's what's gonna be available for capital improvement projects, and it'll be in Tyler for everyone to see, so it's fully transparent. Um, and it'll have as correct payroll as is possible to push out five years.
Yeah.
Right?
Which is a huge thing we're, we're working on right now, we've, we've, I mentioned this to Matt, go ahead, Will, I didn't hear you.
Oh, um, it's, it's a lot, but the county's paid for it and invested into it. So you might as well capture as much benefits from it as possible, so to use it, right? And it's finally being used, um, and it gives a tremendous ability to forecast five years into the future. So you can set your near-term, your near-term long-distance plan.
Mm-hmm.
And it be accurate. And that would enable you to budget for, say, the turf, um, other big-ticket items, the landfill. Um, however, that's gonna wanna be budgeted based on this CDPH either terms for when they want it to come online.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a tremendous tool and, um, make it as a dashboard. So people are learning how to do that in the county, it's, it's basically bringing the county up to current for budgeting. Um, which is, it's a good process, right? You learn things, um, but the goal is to put everything so that the Board of County Commissioners and Candace have a clean view of actuals.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that you can manage, um, organize it and control it as it needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
So it's actually, it's pretty exciting from a financial perspective.
Yes.
It's exciting, yes.
Yeah, like, it's, it's a pretty cool thing for the county.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it'll put Lake County very quickly above the capabilities of all of its comparable counties. So that's, not to be competitive, but it's always good to, um, meet or exceed your potential, right? Cuz if you're not, you're doing something wrong.
Yeah.
And the capital assets have been a very, very important one, and due to, um. Maybe readily available records, it's been a challenge for commissioners. So anything to improve that will give you a better look and, um, the ensuing better decisions. Right, so it's pretty exciting.
Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions for us?
No.
I don't know off the top of my head what the schedule actually was for the next crew, do you know?
I think it's not till like three.
Three o'clock.
But I think Duncan's online, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, are we okay to move ahead?
It does a lot, and there's a lot of time left.
Is Andy coming back?
You build the base, and then the base could roll.
Uh, he's got, he said he's not coming back.
He's not coming back?
No, cuz.
It's kind of exciting, it's, it's.
I'm sorry babe, I got you, the, I think that the class started at two.
Oh, okay.
Addams, so it's a long class.
Do you guys have other people joining here, or is it just you and Duncan?
Actually, I, I invited Dan here.
I thought you might have.
Yeah, Jer, yes, we were, I was hoping Jer could come to the house and get a full word in.
And I invited Dan between us, so if you and mine, I'd like to wait for him.
Sure.
Do you wanna maybe take a break, pause and come back to it, or is there anything?
Sure.
Okay. We can do that, do we need to close this out and reopen them?
Sure. Uh.
Well, yeah, I guess that's complicated, if other people wanted to come on, they'd be like, I guess this isn't happening anymore. They could check the agenda, but.
We just hit.
Pause.
Yeah.
Do we normally record this, I don't know?
Yeah. It's the same thing as record.
Okay.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Three o'clock, and, uh. It's three o'clock and this is a Lake County, Board of County Commissioners work session on the overview and options for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six grooming. Season led by Mr. Duncan Chisholm, our Parks and Rec, the Open Space Director.
So if you go to the teams.
Yeah.
Um, I might share the screen really fast and then you hit this way so everybody else can see it from zoom. That work?
Hope so. Thank you, so, yeah, this afternoon, we're just gonna discuss, uh, winter trail grooming for twenty twenty-six. And then, uh, Adam's gonna give us all a bit of a background on, on mineral belt trail and, uh, system history and, and some newly cleaned tanks, I guess. So, purpose, uh, we're requesting links from the BICC and which option we used to pursue for winter trail grooming for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And we'll also provide background on the mineral belt trail. So, high-level overview, I've laid out four different options, it's an, a rough cost, estimated cost. Uh, contracted service where we bring in a third party to do the grooming on the mineral belt trail, Dutch Henry and Tintin Golf Course. And it's estimated to cost somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, a lease is a second option, plus we employ a new full-time equivalent person in, uh, public works. Actually, it's gonna cost us a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. Uh, third option is we lease a groomer, plus we employ a couple of part-time seasoned staff to, to undertake the grooming. And obviously, uh, opted for, this is pretty much of any. Uh, at this point in time, we're recommending option one for twenty-five, twenty-six, and we'll talk about that next. So, uh, we've sent out an RFP to get some proposals, I had hoped to have, uh, some actual numbers back today, but we haven't. Uh, based on the following specifications for the mineral belt trail, preseason grooming and cleanup. Uh, make sure the trail is, is ready to go, packing it, and then looking at two times per week, suggested times are Thursday and Mondays. And then whenever it snows four inches in the bottom, estimate thirty-two, uh, grooms per season, uh, give or, give or take conditions.
Wait, I'm sorry, how do you get to thirty-two, just sixteen weeks of grooming?
Yeah.
With no, no estimated anything over four inches unless they're on Monday, I think.
Yeah, so we do it Monday, Thursdays, and then whenever it snows on top of that four inches, so it's estimated thirty-two.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's slow. Okay.
Uh, Dutch Henry, we include it in our proposal, uh, usually Dutch Henry is groomed by CMC, but they are, uh, outside of their term dates. We've picked up their, their work, piece of work, so including it in the proposal here.
Is that they're not gonna groom Dutch Henry again?
They are, but outside of their, their t- term dates, so they, they go away on, on holiday.
Got it.
Uh, so we need somebody to pick up and do that soon as, while they're out. Uh, again, estimates maybe nine times over that course of, uh, December through January, and then a week in March. Uh, I put in an optional for, for Mount, Mount Massive, again, grooming, uh, preseason groom in. Usually a couple of times a week or when it snows more than four inches, again, estimated thirty-two times to do complete circuit. Uh, total estimated price somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand. Option two, uh, we got some bids in for leasing a, a snow groomer. Uh, two companies, uh, not much difference in price, realistically. The big differences here are, uh, is the amount of hours that we're allowed to groom with it. So the ski camp company, uh, will give us five hundred hours. Uh, the estimated cost is around, uh, sixty-two thousand, uh, including transportation, getting here and taking it back at the end of the season. Plus there's an option for different tricks, so, uh. Yeah, depending on what we wanted to take it, how you wanted to get it there, so it's an extra, and add that big structure. The second proposal was from, uh, Mountain State's Capital.
Hey, you guys, it's hard to concentrate when you're talking amongst yourselves, if you could just hold off while we get, listen to their full attention.
So they provided us a lease price of approximately fifty-six thousand, uh, six hundred dollars, and only give us three hundred hours of use included in that. Uh, we've estimated that, an annual maintenance, so one of these machines is, uh, a ski camp company, suggests two hundred and fifty hours of maintenance. Uh, for the Mountain State's capital, it's every one hundred hours. Uh, so we've estimated roughly four thousand dollars to lube everything, change the oil, change whatever we need to do on it. And roughly three thousand dollars a year in fuel, again, depending on how many miles or the price of fuel is. So, the, the other proposal we put in here is if we employed a full, a full-time equivalent person under, under Michael's department. Their job would be fully benefited, roughly a cost of eighty thousand dollars. Uh, that is a year-round employee who would also do other duties for the road approach. So although the, the price is higher, it's not totally reflective of.
Just.
Option three, again, same lease of a machine, their, their price doesn't change, but we look at putting in, uh, a couple of cigs. Uh, roughly paying twenty-five dollars an hour, I've gone for an upper limit there, uh. Based on, you know, twelve weeks doing the mineral belt grooming, uh, plus an allowance. Estimate three hundred hours per season. It would roughly cost us seventy-one thousand dollars. Additional considerations, use of our existing UTV, Ginzo for any top-ups outside those parameters. Uh, we'd also talked about doing some specific Nordic skiing marketing, so an allowance for that. That would include our existing, uh, subscription to Nordic Pulse, which is about fifteen hundred. For Mount Massive, again, we need some, uh, money for help from design, signage, and some portable toilets out there if, if we didn't get access to the golf club. So, I've had some discussions with the golf club, they may be interested, but just a bit of a conversation of once and for them. So, yeah, so that's, that's my point. Uh, I can go backwards, I hope. So, I guess questions at this point in time?
Do you wanna get into it or you wanna go through its origins?
Would you wanna go to the next one?
Cause this first part's gonna take us a while. The second part, I don't know if it's really. It's gonna derail us, so I don't know. Why don't we go through this first part first?
Sure.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, when did you send the RFP out?
So.
Or when, when is the due date for that?
The, the due date's being extended to the third of October.
Okay.
Yeah. And once, coming to be thirtieth September.
Okay, have you received any responses?
No.
No, it's not on Duncan's end. We switched to using Airtable and I believe it got emailed in instead in Airtable because there was a time when we did just email RFPs and Xander didn't recognize that because it didn't come through Airtable, but she didn't post it. So it's on our fault, it's our fault on my and Xander's end.
Okay.
For not communicating.
So the leases are just an estimate?
No, the leases are actuals.
Yeah.
So with the, oh, you're asking about is the grooming twice a year?
Contract, yes.
Yeah, 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 the service.
But we did speak with someone and get.
Get.
From them.
Do they have a company that would potentially be bidding? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
That's pretty.
Okay, well, I guess, uh, it seems like there's a question there. I guess we could go through, and we'll keep it pretty loose here and just have a discussion. So go ahead. I think for me, it's hard to weigh the options without understanding what the goal is. So what is our goal?
The goal is to see how much we can afford, really, because it's not like, do we want to groom? We want to groom. So the goal is to groom, but we have to see if it's financially viable. And if it's not financially viable, then we can't. So the goal is to find the right price to groom consistently.
Go ahead, Dan.
Why is there a all-year-round salary included in these numbers?
Well, that's, that's a full-time employee. They would work under road and bridge and do all summer long, so I don't know if that's.
All summer long, you'd work on ski trails or?
No, you would do.
Why is it included in this budget?
Hey, Dan.
It just happens to be.
Makes it look like it's, it's not a real thing.
Dan, you're, you seem like really escalated about it. And, and I, I hear that, but if you wanna understand, just ask the question. Cause I don't think we need to be escalated.
Okay.
About just understanding something.
Okay.
So the, one of the proposals to try to solve having a consistent person who's, who's well-trained to, to use the, the equipment that we have, who's reliable and available consistently throughout the week. One of the ways that we can solve that is through having a full-time employee, like currently we do, who's doing some of the, who was doing some of the mineral belt last year. So the question is, how do we, can we use that same model to solve it more consistently with a full-time employee who's part-time working on that mineral belt? And we know there's a person, but that doesn't take up all of their time. They would have to be doing other things, and so they would be under road and bridge maintenance so that we could consistently give them work to justify them being a full-time employee. So it's just a, a potential model to try to solve the consistency that has been lacking. Does that make sense or do you have further questions about that?
Not, not about the, the salary. I, it's, that's how you'd like to, like make strange books, that's okay with me.
It's just a potential solution. There are three different models, right? One is that none of these people are, are employee. Another is that we have two seasonal employees and another is that we have one full-time employee.
Uh-huh.
So we're just looking at different models of trying to accomplish this in a consistent and cost-effective way. So Duncan's trying to show us lots of different ways to try to accomplish consistent and quality grooming.
But I think that answered, you know, John's question and my question is, you know, these proposals, that's essentially what we've been doing for years, this two-day-a-week thing and, and uh, in the minds of my, in my mind, everybody I know that's skis there, it's been a failure, absolute failure. With the mineral belt sitting under snow, half the weekends, you know, you dutyfully groom it on Tuesday, Thursday night, and it snows on Friday and there it sits. And there it sits, and there it sits, and it's useless.
Hey, Dan, I hear the.
You can't promote it.
Dan, I hear the frustration. We are trying to move forward to a prompt to solve some of those consistency issues, okay?
I think Dan's, he's, he's doing okay, he's just elevated naturally, but uh.
I understand that.
I'm just letting him talk, I know, I know.
It doesn't help, hey, Dan, sorry, it doesn't help me, okay? So I wanna understand from the people who have been doing it, what the problems are. And when you get escalated, I don't really trust what you're saying because it's.
It's just his tone, it's his natural tone.
So I just have a conversation with him because it seems to be coming from like previous issues and I want to look forward with your knowledge, but not with the baggage. So if there's a way you can do that, it would help me make these decisions.
I beg Duncan to sit down and work with me over the last couple of months and.
Okay.
Give him some advice and help him along.
Well, let's stick to the point, so your point is that that option isn't your third option because of the, because of what you stated, and I agree, I think grooming on Thursday, inevitably it snows on Saturday, so that's a good point, point well taken. I don't think there's anything we can do about Dan's tone, I'm sorry, it's.
I just have a follow-up question about it, Dan. So if, so. It's okay. So Dan, in the proposal, the, the four inches or more, what do you think would be, like, is that not actually a good measurement of when we would need extra grooming?
Skating would be horrible, skiing in two inches of snow on Saturday and Sunday.
So you think it's.
And you'll have a product that you won't attract any out-of-town skiers to come and ski, that's for sure.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is what do you think it should be if it's not Monday and Thursday and four inches plus? In your mind, what should it be? Trying to get to that.
And shouting daily grooming.
Every day.
Daily grooming.
Cool.
It's the industry standard.
That's what I wanted to hear, so that I understood what would be best for what kind of solution we could find. Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Yeah, when we look at that option and eighty thousand dollar salaries all put on grooming, that implies that the other eight months of the year, they don't have any value. I mean, wouldn't it make more sense to put a third of their salary towards the grooming option and the two-thirds in the normal road and bridge? Yeah, that's probably where, that's probably where it would live in the budget.
Yeah.
So.
So, so grooming would actually be his staff doing it as it has been when we've had a volunteer from his staff go do it because they just enjoy doing it. So it's budgeted in the one place. But we have to make, or these guys have to make decisions that impact our entire budget, so we would have to budget for the full cost of that human if they're a full-time FTE and they would be doing other road and bridge activities when they are not grooming. It's just a little, the reason we presented this option is I can work at the restaurant and make twenty-five dollars not in the freezing cold snow at the crack of dawn. It's a little hard to get people to agree to come do that and show up consistently even if paid. So we presented this option because if someone could have year-round work, working the other months of the year in road and bridge where we're also under-resourced, we would need them to make a decision that encompasses the full cost of what it would cost us to do that. And that's why it's in the proposal, so we, it's just one of the options.
Right, but it just doesn't make sense to me that they're working a third of the time, but you're paying your full salary for grooming.
Sure, because they work for the county the rest of the time and they get paid out of road and bridge, whether they're grooming or whether they're working on roads. It's just where the position was. We don't allocate people's positions and their pay based on the time they're doing different activities. It feel like me recording when I'm meeting with staff versus when I'm signing agreements. I just get paid a salary to work for the county and that's what that eighty thousand would be. It's not saying that it's just for grooming, but we have to plan for the whole human and they have to vote on, if they pick that option, the whole human.
Taking, taking that approach, why not take the full eighty thousand dollar employee, put it in road and bridge and none of it grooming?
There isn't a grooming department, there's road and bridge, and that person, whether they're grooming or not, will be paid out of road and bridge.
I get, get that, but it just makes that option seem way more expensive.
I think, I think, I appreciate that, I agree that it, it looks inflated. I think just from my seat, I understand what is being proposed and I can do the calculation in my head. Like, oh, I'm, I'm taking sixty percent of that person's salary out when I'm comparing all three, and they're trying to make sure that it's transparent that, that we're adding a full person and not to hide the others, you know, sixty percent. So, so they're presenting it in that way, but in our minds, we should definitely be understanding apples to apples.
Right, and I think though the public would look at it and go, you're paying somebody to groom for four months, eighty thousand dollars.
Totally.
As, as a, a person in the public, as a person.
Yeah. I think that's why they put underneath the eighty thousand dollar employee that they would be working in road and bridge for the rest of the year, so it is at least spelled out there. Can you go back then?
That's fair, it's, it's a, it's a wonky way of, of presenting it.
It's okay, we, you know, we'll get over that. Yeah, that's okay. We'll get past that. So, uh, this, you said your preferred option is option number one?
Yes.
How did, how did you come to that? And if we don't have any RFPs back, is it, well, how, first of all, how'd you get, how'd you get to that? As, as your preferred option?
So, I guess, you know, it's one, one cheapest.
Is that the, the main reason?
Uh, two, uh, it's, we would bring in a, a company who, who had done in the past, who, who had the, the skills, right? So they, it suggested us that this would be a, a schedule which was workable for them. I think it, it gets our, our product. It increases, it depends based on our product, right? So it's a starting point. Advice from that particular company, and you've had those conversations as well, is that it is unrealistic to do seven days a week.
Well, we're not asking for seven days a week.
Yeah.
We're asking for, you know, when it needs it and when we can make it better.
Yeah. So again, these, these are assumptions based on feedback from, from a groom.
And the thing about it is it has to be groomed at the right time.
Yeah.
To make it good, for the right product, so I kind of agree with Dan. We've tried this even with the plus four inches, so, uh, what do you think about this option, Michael Irwin?
I mean, you know, that's what we've tried to do in the past.
Yeah.
Candy, right?
Yeah.
Um, I don't always have a person when it snows four inches to put them out there because I'm up on roads.
Yeah.
Get people around to be able to get there.
Yeah.
Um, without that, you know, they're not able to get there anyways and most people don't go out skiing when it's snowing four inches today and they can't see you people on their face. I understand when the sun comes out, everybody goes out. So we try to get them there, we try to make, you know, the best possible, um, product that we can. But yeah, I understand we're not always there because I have one person that volunteers his time, he doesn't get paid for it. And he comes out at three o'clock in the morning when everybody's off the trail, I groom the trail and then goes to work.
He doesn't get paid for that.
Huh? And he doesn't wanna be paid for it, he wants to volunteer his time.
Wow.
Um, I'm offered to pay him and I give him the other days that he takes off, um, that covers his time. So, you know, those days he might get paid, but he takes extra time off like on Friday. Um, he loves it, he knows how to do it, he's worked at major ski areas. Um, he knows how to groom. And whenever I've gone skiing, I go out, I took him to skiing right, you know, after he grooms. It's, it's awesome right after you groom, like, great. And when the wind blows on parts of it where the wind always blows, I mean, you can't be out there every day or every hour going back over it just to make sure that the wind has knocked down.
Well, we don't expect that, just a little bit better than what we've had.
You know, like I said, he, he does the best job he can with what he's got and the time that he's got.
Where does that old snowcat fit into all of this?
Um, I mean, that's what we would be using still. And he goes out and it, it's still a pretty good machine, it's got, you know, low hours on it. If we get the tires changed, that one went out this last season, and, and pretty pricey.
Yeah.
But if we get the wheels changed on it and with the new system, I mean, it'd be a pretty good machine.
Michael, if we do, with the, the FTE option, I'm, I'm getting the sense that if you had another person in road and bridge and it snowed, the priority would be to have all staff, um, plowing. And so then, so like every time it snows, the grooming would still be deprioritized.
Uh, that's a possibility.
Which I don't think is wrong, I'm just worried that that's another fault, pitfall of this.
We're out in the snow.
We hire an FTE to groom, that person will be assigned to grooming first.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. But what if we're short on plowing, that's still the priority?
That's why we're not for our CDLs.
I love that for you guys.
No, but we are working to get CDLs actually for more of his staff, so he has more help on the, on the grooming front, or not the grooming front, on the plowing front, so we can, if we hire someone to be the dedicated plowing person, that's what they'll do first, or not the grooming.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that also it's hard to find enough people who can do what you need in your department, period, let alone taking somebody who's skilled and not having them do that. And, and if, if push came to shove.
That person was hired separate from what I have right now.
Yeah.
They would do that.
Yeah.
But right now, the guy that does it, he's out plowing first.
Right. And then he does it.
Right. Okay, cause he's just nice. I love him. Yeah, just wanna make sure that wouldn't happen.
No, if, if that person was hired just to groom, when I groom, when it's time to groom, that's what he'd do.
So, Michael, in your budget, when you're preparing FTEs for the year, would this be a valuable person to have? Who, who would be more capacity not in the snow season and who wouldn't be available?
Yes.
Okay.
Because like this last summer, I had to steal people from other departments.
Right.
To do what we, to get done when we got done.
Yeah, okay. So you would have been asking for this person anyway? You will be asking for this.
I'm asking for people.
You are asking for this person anyways, okay. Yeah.
Uh, what if we replaced all the wheels on the old snowcat? Would that get us through this season?
Um, I believe it would. The machine is in really good condition, it's very operable. I mean, there was a couple of places where the operator was worried that there's a door switch. If the door moves or something, it locks the brakes up. He just didn't want somebody else to, to drive it and drive through the bridge, you know? So it doesn't have brakes, that's not a good thing. You know, he wants somebody that knows that that could happen. And supposedly those switches are fixed now, so that shouldn't be a problem. But he had to take some people out, other people out, the ones that volunteered.
Took me out. It's not easy to drive, it's not like a new, easy one to drive, but I mean, if we're looking at sixty thousand dollars. And by the way, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee is willing to donate or to contribute half that. And by the way, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee is willing to donate or to contribute half that, at least verbally, we've, we've. So I don't know. That option I think should be on there, using the old snowcat in conjunction with the new side-by-side. I don't know where that lives.
Yeah, where's that?
And how that, it doesn't really work by itself at the golf course because it's not heavy enough. But if we had a full-time employee that was dedicated, and then the thing is, we kind of need a backup option in case the old one breaks down. So, so the, all these options include a brand-new groomer to eliminate that part of it.
I don't know that we could scramble to get one mid-season if the older one went out. I think it was the thinking and putting this together. We would just then have to call it a season. We're trying to get somebody, but it's already, there's not a lot of companies that do that anyways, is what we found in the RFP process. And that once they're rented, it is hard to get it mid-season.
Are we rolling the dice on the old machine or with some new wheels? It's only got how many hours? It's less than five hours. With no emissions controls and no special filter.
To me, it's still a good machine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's inside in the summertime. It's not out in the sunshine where the rubber gets worn out or gets, you know, sun rot on it. It's pretty well protected. You take care of it.
Yeah.
Like I said, that one wheel came apart, then mechanic said that, you know, it's gonna happen. And then those type of wheels that are on there are not made anymore. They've got an upgraded version of that, and that's why it costs two thousand dollars. Like, that's a snowcat.
I, I think that should be an option. It'd be a really attractive option, you know, budget-wise, with your full-time employee. Does that person exist? Can we find someone?
Um, I believe so, because I've got, actually one that works at a landfill that wants to groom.
Okay.
Do they know how?
Um, yes, he, he does. He's, he was trained by the college how to groom.
So would he be pulled away down the landfill during that time?
Possible that he could. Or you can have the fill-in for one, you know, somebody else about it.
Just be worried about under-resourcing the landfills further when I've heard from them that they feel under-resourced.
Yeah.
So if we did this, that would solve the grooming every day issue, correct? Because he's dedicated to grooming during the four months of winter, and so he could groom every day. He wouldn't need it for.
The goal is to just groom whenever we can make it better, so it's like at eight P M.
Yeah, right, yeah. So he doesn't, doesn't groom it, doesn't need it. But any day that it needed grooming, he could do it. So that might solve one of the bigger issues.
That's what an FTE could be really positive, a really positive option, because then we're in control of the schedule as opposed to a contractor. A contractor is committed for certain days and then has other clients to serve, right? Yeah, but so, yeah, FTE could be a really lovely option.
A real flexible one that could work. It snowed all day and then the sun comes out at three. Somebody calls me and says, all right, you're gonna have to work tonight, and then.
What about, how does it, can we go back to the golf course idea though? So if that, if, we're just brainstorming, right? If that were to solve the Mineral Belt Trail, what, how do we get the equipment for the golf course? Also, we did not, I do think that our priority was to make sure the Mineral Belt Trail was consistent this year first, is our priority. And awesome if we can do the golf course. That's personally my favorite spot.
A lot of people's favorite spot.
Yeah. Um, so, so how do we solve that?
Yeah, so in my original thinking was if we leased the machine, it would be Mineral Belt Trail. The other existing machine could live at the golf course because moving stuff, you can't just drive it on the road. You can't track it on track road.
Right. Okay.
And you get into also potential issues of trying to do both places at the same time. What close to work, huh? Because window, the ideal booming time. So I guess my other comment would be, yeah, what is, if we use the existing machine, what happens if it does break down? Whereas if we leased the machine, yes, it's more expensive, but they bring a new one if it's out for two days.
Dan, will that existing machine fit on those trails out there or is it too wide?
Excuse me?
Will the existing cat fit on the golf course or is it too wide?
It needs work. There needs on.
The, the golf course.
September twenty-third. In order to make that work, there's a lot of trees on the, the tree sections of the golf course that would need to be cut to make it practical. Could you inch that thing through in a total white-knuckle thing? Yeah, it's been done before. We've had mountain states grooming. It is not optimal. You're, you're risking the machine. You're risking hurting your driver. You just, you need, it's not a giant project. It could be done.
So cutting trees on the golf course, is that what you're suggesting or?
Yes, like, like on Cheryl Shuffle Trail. And, and the other trail that goes on the far west is like not visible from the golf course. It's not gonna change the visual of anybody on the golf course at all. Those trails need to be widened to use the bigger pad.
Or it's late to get to buy it on those.
Is that on the golf course property or is that on Forest Service property?
It's on the golf course property.
What about just prioritizing non-trees?
And then the other question.
But it's not part of the golf course that you see when you play golf.
Right. What about just prioritizing the non-tree part of the golf course? Because that's my favorite, is the non-trees section. So what if we just did that? Would that cat work on the golf course?
It's, it's tiny.
The cat or the?
Oh, the mountain trails.
Sure, I know. I'm just trying to solve the problem now because it's late to do, it's late to take trees down. And I'm trying to honor that, that's reasonable.
We could take the trees down, but we'd have to get the front of the board out there and make sure it's okay.
Yeah.
Also links to lake. I don't know that we'll ever get permission to take out any more trees out there.
Uh, you, you, you are correct. It's not, it's not groomable right now because there's, there's trees that fell down after the fact. They're laying right down across the trails.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly on what we call the B O R hill there. Simply not groomable. You know, the Forest Service can tell you all day long that that trail's ready to go, and it is not.
Right.
And then, we now have the trail, the entire trail, the, it is the, it has the potential to be the most popular trail in, in all of Lakeview. And now it's lined with stumps. And as soon as you have the trail, you're no longer grooming around trees that you can see. You have stumps under the ground and you can mark them. You better mark them real well because snow stakes fall over. They get hit by the, you know, the tail end of the machine. And next time through, if you're using a, a cap with a blade, you're gonna hit one of those stumps, groom the machine, and hurt the driver. Just really for that trail to be usable, the right thing to do is to get out there with an excavator and pick every one of those stumps that line all five miles of that trail.
Well, let's say that doesn't happen this year. Explain to us why that side-by-side isn't enough to groom the golf course, from your expert opinion? As the guy who's grooming.
It is enough.
It is.
It's not enough to, to groom into a super high standard. There's all these issues of it being soft. We skied on it for a couple of years before we bought a snowcat. It's not the first choice. It's not professional grooming that you can really sell to visiting skiers so much, but the side-by-side will get the job done out there. I know they struggled mightily with getting stuck last year. That's because the trails never got marked preseason. And they never got marked ever. And every time, when you're grooming, you gotta feel the powder and you start packing it here, and it blows in on the trail, and it actually augments the amount of snow that's on the trail. So you got this rock-hard pedestal you're grooming on, and then poof, it goes down into the, into, uh, old corn snow. And that doesn't work. You get stuck, you get stuck, and you get stuck. And the other thing is whoever, whoever set the, the hitch set up last year, they did a beautiful professional job. Except they didn't ask anybody who knew how the Ginsu actually worked. You need a multi-position hitch. Every time you groom powder with the Ginsu, the hitch needs to be wildly elevated so the knives are way up out of the snow. And all you're grooming with in that powder is the tail end of the cul. And, and that will prevent about half of your stuck situations. And it's not out of, it's not impossible. It also sounds like we're gonna be, now that we let the cat out of the bag, which needed to happen because we groomed in violation of the Forest Service permit, all six years we did it out there. The eight-feet-wide thing. We groomed twelve feet wide out on the, on the Forest Service property in violation of the permit. And apparently you admitted to that, and they said eight feet. But it's very ambiguous numbers in that permit.
Yes, I didn't.
It's, it's something to the effect of, of five acres, three miles, and eight feet wide. And when you manipulate those numbers, they don't add up. If you do, the acres and the length of the trail, it's twelve feet wide. And we did that, you know. That was not fine. The board of the ski club at Adam Bay the last year, he said, we'll ask for forgiveness later if anybody calls us on it, and nobody ever happened.
I think that at least could be looked at by Mr. Hobbs here and see if we can.
Yeah. Put those numbers down and find it a, a Forest Service and say, is it five acres? Is it three miles, twelve feet wide? Is, you know, you gotta get an, an answer to that. Because it's much, much, much more usable, and, and the county snowcat can't go out there if they're gonna hold us to that eight-foot number. That machine just doesn't hurt eight feet wide. That needs to be settled, and I asked for help getting that settled months and months and months and months ago. I've been, you know, begging to have that answered along with other things out there. But right now, a crew of some sort, volunteer crew, needs to go out there and make the trail groomable. And, and for one year with the grooming out there only eight feet wide and marking the stumps, that's manageable. But our proposal here says five miles. It seems like they're planning on abandoning the, uh, Lakes to Lake Trail.
Which is one of the best trails in the county.
Yeah, it's super popular. Half the people who ski at the, at the golf course, they go out, they ski the Lakes to Lake Trail and get back in their car and go home. All the trails are, are great. They should all be groomed. It's a great venue. And it should be groomed every day it needs it. Grooming at haphazardly is, is, is not a good amenity for our, our locals and is certainly not gonna attract anybody from out of town. Lots of different formats you could do out there on the, on Lakes to Lake if we're held to eight feet. You can abandon skates being on it, set a classic track on your eight-foot thing, and classic skiers would love that. They won't go off into bushes. And, or you just abandon the classic track and make an eight-foot skate lane, and skate skiers would be reasonably happy with that. And, uh,
So we have two assets. We have the side-by-side, could go back to the golf course. I mean, that, that, I think that's an option. And then the thirty thousand dollars that the Mineral Belt Trail has verbally spoken of, we haven't really voted on it. What do you think, Smokey? You're so quiet. Yeah, you wanna, you wanna touch on it, but I'm.
Um, throw us a key into the bus.
Well, I wouldn't preferably, I would have to rather start by grooming one entity well than two entities half-assed.
Yeah.
Um, get one thing right first, then we can add to it. Um, even though I about to ski in the golf course. I think it's a huge asset. I don't think this late in the game, we can do both. Um, so, yes.
Because two assets on the Mineral Belt is, would really complement each other. The side-by-side would really complement the old groomer, and it's two things that we already own.
Yeah. Um, with the contracted grooming, we, it had a number of different things that were great and a number of things that weren't so good. Um, one with Mountain States, their groomer lives out of town, so I would have to wake up in the morning, text him if it was snowing, if it was clear. A good amount of the time we got it right, and definitely a number of times we did it. You know, he, he would be up on David Grooming Vale Pass first and then come here. Um, so it required a bit of communication. And, um, and so we definitely messed it up sometimes because, you know, I just assumed that he thought it was sunny and nice here, but it was dumping on Vale Pass. And so we decided to skip it, and then we'd go out on a beautiful Saturday, and it's not groomed, you know. The time that they groomed was great. You know, we'd groom at like four o'clock in the morning, so it really had the time to set up and that really come back on user conflict. Um, I would go up there with Howard Tritz, and we'd watch a fat biker ride right down the middle of the trail, and we'd know about that. So the contracted grooming had some really good things and then not so great things, and then also the cost is pretty expensive. Um, but the contracted groomer would be willing to work with us if we did communicate with him and it was possible that he could come back after it stopped snowing on a different day. But that could be different this year. That was just a rumor that we had that year. He'd be like, yeah, let me know when it's done snowing, I'll get over there.
Was that Mountain States?
That was Mountain States.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And was that a similar cost structure?
It was.
It was less expensive.
It was less, yeah.
But was it like a retainer, and then if snowed, if it snowed more, you agreed to pay up to a certain amount?
Yeah.
Kind of structure?
Yeah, and it had a pretty long contract period, so we tried to really extend, extend the contract period. Um, so it has its positives and negatives. The one thing that was really nice was just not have to worry about the equipment. You know, like, you know, if their snowcat went down, they would just bring another one and park it right there. So that was just as far as like reliability and the grooming, that was kind of nice, just having that knowledge, knowing that you're not gonna have to feed down with these attire or whatnot, because that could be stressful a lot in Road and Bridge.
Yeah, but we would have to buy some extra wheels for the seasons that we had them on hand. Put that in the, uh, option four.
Yeah, I mean, I would even put, you know, even a couple of them in this year. It's under ten thousand dollars, where just have one on hand if we needed to change, so we can probably change it back on, on the trail.
We know that's the Achilles' heel to that. The other thing about keeping it local is it's a local job. Some local kid, getting tired of working at the dump, get out on the trail and, and it's just more flexible and also gives you help in the summer, so. I don't know, I don't know.
If, if you have your full-time person for the winter, it seems like they could be a day on the M V T and then out the golf course, just go back and forth, and you can use the snowcat on the Mineral Belt and leave the Ginsu down there. And if you're touching the golf course often, you won't get stuck. Well, you can drive off it and get stuck, but if it's marked and you're packing it all the time, it's a lot easier to see it because it hasn't had time to completely disappear in the glow of snow. So the likelihood that you get stuck is way better. So you can get by with those two pieces of groom.
The trip with that, though, is that when it snows, you have to prioritize one to be really good. And so then people say, oh, the county is sucking. If, because say like you're prioritizing the Mineral Belt, you get that done, it's setting up really nicely after it snows, and then it's like six hours later, the golf course is starting. There's just a quality control there where it's like, oh, one of them will not be as good as the other.
And when it's warm, you wanna get on it first thing in the morning before it gets too set up and heavy and stuff.
I mean, ideally, it's two, it's two people for us to do both, to have a quality, to do quality control, right?
If you want it perfect, that's what you do.
Which is what we all want, right? And so we, like to Smokey's point. Which is what we all want, right? And so like to Smokey's point, do one this year well.
Yeah.
And it would be great if we could do both, but I also don't wanna like set people up the expectation that we're doing the golf course and we're not doing it well again. So it's also something I wanna avoid.
And I think that's kinda what I had asked for previously is to focus on the Mineral Belt, do it well. And then look at where we're actually at with budget next year. To know if we could add the next piece instead of taking on both, not knowing if we can afford and do both well. To have a kind of step-by-step process to really do both and do them well. And the second part of this presentation, I think Adam has some information to share. I'd love to think about if we're gonna be taking over grooming the Mineral Belt, could we start to do some types of events when we're doing it and doing it well enough to actually start to recuperate some of the cost of paying for the grooming and be able to use that to fund being able to do the second piece well.
Well, the signage, I wanna, I wanna see this, but also the signage that Duncan you put in. Can we, between the Mineral Belt Trail, I know there's been lots of talk about getting signage up for QR codes for donations. Has that happened with the Mineral Belt Trail?
So in the past, we had QR codes that were just simple QR codes on a tomato steak right at the entry.
Right.
And we would get about five thousand dollars a year from those and they were pretty crappy. So with a little more work and consistent good grooming, I think we could, I think the Mineral Belt Trail Committee could do a much better job fundraising with events and just, yeah, just with better grooming, social media. And we could really step up the game to raise a significant amount of money to help with grooming.
And that could help, yeah.
It's been done a little bit, but not very well.
That could help justify expanding to the golf course. It's like proof of product. Reasonable investment in that product. And then we could say like, okay, this is working.
Yeah, and also monitoring the usage that it's getting.
Yeah.
A lot better.
Yeah.
I do think a lot of those ore cart, as distasteful as it is to put a QR code on one of those ore carts, I mean, it's not ideal, but that's where people stop and they're like, this is so fantastic and it's been good all week and then they look over and it just says, you having fun? Consider five dollar donation. It just goes to grooming. It doesn't go to salaries or any of this or that. It goes to maintain the trail and it'd be nice if it wasn't directed at Lake County Community Fund. No offense, but if there was a nonprofit or some kind of fund where they could get a, cause some of the donations last year were five thousand, one thousand, a couple of multi-thousand dollar donations. Those people are gonna want their tax receipt. So one thing at the Mineral Belt Trail Committee we talked about is having a QR code that went directly to the grooming, Mineral Belt Trail Grooming Fund, so.
Do you guys have a bank account?
No, we're just exploring that. There's an attorney on the board.
Okay, cool.
I really think we could make money, not just fund it, but make money. And I also would like to point out that when Dan ran the golf course, it was self-sustaining with donations and tickets and season passes and so maybe that's not our job and maybe we can start working on getting agreement with the golf course and we don't need to go through the sort of the history of why it blew up. But it would be nice to, to give back to that so that we're not doing that. Cause it should self-sustain out there. No one minded paying a couple bucks to go ski. But the Mineral Belt Trail I think should remain free, with donation only. People from out of town love it, people from around the world. And five bucks would be nothing to them, as long as it was visible. Right now, I only, when you guys said, you know, there's those steel posts where you can donate. Been here almost twenty-four years. I was, I've never noticed it. I was like, oh, there it is. Cause there's, it looks like a parking post. So I think there's a lot of lost opportunity for revenue generation, but. What do you guys think? What do you think Candice of not renting a machine or, you know, having an option number five?
I think I'd wanna actually explore. Michael has worked with the piece of equipment. I'd really like to actually get it looked at, make sure it really is gonna work. So I'm not scrambling to find a piece of equipment when we're failing everyone to have the trail done because it gives out. So I'd wanna make sure that's, we really have it looked at and have that actually dialed in. My concerns and the reason option one is more appealing to me for year one, but happy to do whatever option you guys pick, is once we go that route, if the machine breaks, we don't have a backup, then we now have an FTE that I'm gonna be finding other stuff for them to do, which I think we can handle, but then you're committed to a salary and benefits for an FTE.
Which is being requested anyway. Where does that come in?
I think he's asking for a couple of FTEs, but not specifically for this.
Okay.
Michael's got a lot of people who are gonna enjoy their retirement. We wanna make sure we have a plan for when that, that exodus happens. But I, I just wanna make sure we're intentional not bring someone on to do something that then it goes away because we didn't really research the equipment. I think we love to make do with what we have, which is great when it actually is true and gonna last. So I would just really wanna have it actually looked at and make sure we're not signing it for a piece of equipment that's gonna go out on us halfway through the year and then we now don't have an agreement for anyone to groom for us. We have a piece of equipment doesn't work and now the trail doesn't get done, like nothing happens.
Those are good points. So who would, who would be in charge of looking at, or who's, Eddie knows the machine better than anybody else. Would you be looking to, I mean, what does that look like?
Do you wanna bring somebody in from outside, mechanic?
I think let's get Eddie to look at it, get his thoughts and opinions. Double check, can we get the tires ordered since they're not made anymore? It seems like there's a substitution.
We have a place to get them.
Let's make sure we can get them, get it in the budget. We need to make a decision rather quickly, whether that's a go or no-go option. For the simple fact that it's the end of September, we're gonna have to hire a person, get them on. It takes a little bit to get things done and the money for this doesn't currently live in our budget. So we've gotta do a supplemental to get it in there. So whatever we do, I think we're just gonna have to get that done really quickly.
One thing, um, oh, sorry, I just lost it. Game went.
Which one was option one?
Option one was the lease and that was my point. We may not.
No, it's a contract.
That's your preferred.
As a contract, so you have to rent stuff.
The preferred option, we may not get in our feedback, especially from Mountain States.
No, we.
Cause it's in itself.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We did that before we came here.
So could we modify option one to do a contract? They do it two days a week. And then we use our groomer on the other days and the FTE person to do it the days that Mountain States doesn't to get seven day grooming. And at least we know two days a week that groomed.
If something happened to our.
If some machines start a camp.
Like the groomer is the, the contract is the backup, kind of?
They work together.
As a, yeah, like we provide a backup or they provide a backup.
And then don't, just keep in mind that for our budget, that the Mineral Belt Trail Committee is willing to help with that. That's a, that's a pretty good idea.
That would free up time at the golf course.
It's just the most expensive option.
That's just doubling. That's just like two options, which is like also not very financially responsible.
I just wanna make two points. Number one, we really kinda need to make a decision like very soon.
No, we know.
Not today, that, cause we can't.
I know, but we need to make a decision very soon and then it's not lost on me that a lot of the conversations we're having in this community are about the shortfall of six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars in budget that we might not have. So every one of us that works for this organization called Lake County Government is doing everything we can to like squeeze pennies together.
Yeah.
And so it's a little bit rough to be sitting in this room and be talking about how we're gonna combine budgets and blow things up from the standpoint of spending way more than what is actually reasonable. And Duncan and I have done a tremendous amount of work to repair the relationships that have been injured and make sure that we actually have viable options that can, that actually can work. So I would just implore the Board of County Commissioners to, you've acquired a lot of information, so please just make a decision sooner or later, please. Because, yeah, it is definitely feeling a lot like we're just spiraling around a toilet bowl at a certain point.
That's fair. It's complicated, right? Because you all are having different discussions about budget than this discussion is with us and extra things we wanna do. And it's very rare that I think we even have this kind of conversation as a BOCC. Is to like have a budgetary conversation outside of the rest of the context of the entire budget. So I hear, I hear the complication and frustration there, Adam. And I appreciate you saying it.
Great. So this context that I'm laying down here, that has to do with the Mineral Belt Trail, just to make the county commissioners and county staff, some of whom have different levels of institutional knowledge that do not span as far back as some of our community members who do not work for the county government. So this is to try and make everyone understand sort of where the Mineral Belt Trail came from in terms of legally, like the actual functions of it and all its component parts, including the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, so.
Are we, are we done talking about this first part? Cause you jumped right into the second part, so. Dan, did you have one more thing you wanted to say?
Yeah, and when I hear all this, you know, this keep the budget under control, the budget under control, what's being discussed here is abandoning the golf course for the lack of a thousand dollars. You already own the equipment that paid in full, that you would groom it with. You can absolutely certainly find a volunteer groomer or two or three, or whatever it takes to get the job done. Groom seven days a week and you'd need a fuel budget. And you know, you have some trail markers and and some maintenance, you know, anything that works in the snow falls apart pretty quickly. But it's, it's essentially nothing. And we're talking about just abandoning that because it might distract us from the Mineral Belt Trail. A couple volunteers grooming at the golf course with equipment we already own is not gonna detract from the Mineral Belt Trail. It's just not.
Yeah, I agree. I think we were just thinking about leaving that side-by-side up on the Mineral Belt, so. And it's really complicated. I know we're short on time. It seems like Adam's really frustrated right now, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, this is.
Try and contain your frustration because this is really important to me. Do you have some place to go or?
No, no, no. It's just, again, this is a, I don't feel like this conversation feels that different than the last work session we had on this, so. Just trying to, again, staff members dedicating time to this, wanting to make sure we provide what the board needs to make a decision.
Well, I wanna make sure we're done talking about it before we move on. Because otherwise we're gonna have to have the conversation again. So I wanna just explore all the options before we jump into the history of the Mineral Belt Trail, which I'm not really sure that because you're open right now. And I could be wrong.
Matt, which, what option are you leaning towards or what are you, maybe it'd be nice for us to give staff a little bit of like.
Room to breathe. It would be really nice if Andy was here. So hopefully he'll watch this and give us a little room to breathe, but I'm into the most affordable option. And also the most benefit. And also tracking usage and trying to get the QR code so that next year we can say we spent this much, but we generated this much fun, this much income and make it worth it so we don't have to have this conversation. Which seems to be, is it worth it or is it not worth it? You know, I, I know it's worth it. I know we can generate the income, but we have to have a good product and a good plan, so. I agree. I think we need an option four. Using the equipment we have, what do we do at the side-by-side? Can we use volunteers and we'll just make it a priority and do it in the next few weeks if you guys can. It's a really busy time of year and we kinda let the summer fly by, but it's not too late. You know, it's only September, so.
So Matt, am I hearing you say you're into, right now, we're not making decisions, but you're leaning towards an FTE who's using the equipment that we already have, focusing on the Mineral Belt Trail? And what is your thought about the golf course?
I mean, if Dan thinks we can use that side-by-side down there, I mean, people love the golf course. I love it. It's, it's real nice for older people who don't wanna go out and do hills all day, so. Yeah, I guess that's, that's the way I would lean from a budget perspective, from our equipment perspective. I'd hate to just see that thing stripped there as an asset all winter and just abandon it. And then also, you know, prove that we can make this happen and see how happy people are like, man, it was all winter, it's been good and it starts to get around. We wouldn't even need to advertise it. It would just be word of mouth in Summit County and Aspen and people coming up from BV like, I don't know what happened, but it's good all the time. Every time I get on the Nordic Pulse, it says it's groomed. Let's go up there and ski and have lunch, so. That's where I'm kinda from.
Love it.
I know I've said that a million times.
It's okay. I love your passion. The, the golf course, are you thinking that we would use the same FTE who would then go down there after they've prioritized the Mineral Belt Trail? Or are you leaning towards using volunteers to use the ginzu on the golf course? I'm trying to hear that our staff are like, please give us direction. So I just wanna be really explicit about the whole picture.
It'd be nice if the golf course, yeah, the full-time employee would be in charge of both.
Okay.
It'd be nice if we could get, cause the, the side-by-side is really easy to operate. And if we could use some volunteers to help us at the golf course, not necessarily with the machine, cause it's complicated and big and quirky. But it's a good machine. It's a good, strong diesel machine. So maybe could we explore the option of having that full-time employee being our grooming czar? We also have a couple volunteers with a lot of knowledge that could jump in and help out if we had some time. To me, that seems like the least investment for the most bang for our buck.
Okay, and then I, I love it. I think that would get, I agree. I think that would get us the most consistent product for the least amount of money. Once Michael gets us more information about the vibe, the longevity of that machine, then we would actually have, we would know if that was like a reliable asset.
Yes.
And I think we would need buy-in from our community to hear that we're trying to save money by using the asset that we have now. So if it broke down, the people in this room would be able to speak for us and not point fingers at us because of the the discussion that this requires. And then I also think that we would need to work with our attorney to figure out how we use volunteers. Because that has been a confusion point. And then I also would want to understand, man, the, would that go through the golf course? Because they are the ones who currently have the lease and I heard tell that maybe the golf course has already a winter lease, sublease out to somebody?
Just in the building. We're not, we're not allowed this year probably to use the building.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they're, but they said, was that right Duncan? Groom, groom away.
So just, so just legally, I would wanna understand from our attorney, what does it mean for us to operate at the same time that somebody else is operating on land that we've leased and that there's a sublease to? You know, like I just wanna understand that. And would the volunteer situation actually make it so that we would want the golf course on our, working with us, collaborating, so that maybe they would be volunteers through the golf course? If we can't legally have volunteers? So I, I do think that there's like some things to sort out.
Yeah.
And in my mind, just napkin math, that would be, Duncan is the, or Candace or Michael, is the eighty thousand dollars including benefits?
Yeah.
That's the total, all in for one FTE?
Yeah, their FTE group.
Okay, so I would assume this is at least a third of somebody's time.
Yeah.
Because actually the season starts before. And it goes longer than has been, than was up. And it goes longer than has been, than was up there.
Yeah.
So a third of eighty thousand dollars is like twenty or twenty-six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Plus say ten thousand dollars for tires, plus the seven thousand dollars for signage, plus four thousand dollars for fuel, plus... And then would the person be doing the maintenance of the cap? Or would we need to have somebody else doing the maintenance, Michael?
Oh, yeah.
We have to have a kid. Okay.
And not forget about the valuable partnership.
I mean, they, they maintenance, you know, like chicken oil or filling oil and stuff would be on the hopper. But if there's anything that needs replaced, like the hose or something, who loves a whole, how about the mechanics?
Okay, so twenty-six plus ten, thirty-six plus seven, forty-three, plus four, forty-seven. So that would be a forty-seven thousand dollar choice.
And we get both, both ski areas.
Yep. Does that?
Southern then grooming.
And a full-time groomer with a couple of, uh, a couple of volunteers.
Would it, Duncan, does that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Check out to you? Okay.
It works, yeah. My, my only question would be, are we offering, the golf course is a free service.
No, I think there should be a big donation, like it's free if you can't afford it, but if you're driving through from Vale and you're you're walking in and there's a big sign that says, ski free if you're a cheapskate, but if you wanna help out, you know, you expect ten bucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is how it's happened before. Like, that happened, that existed for like twenty years. So I don't think that that's, it's actually a new idea to have like somebody there managing
Yeah, yeah.
access to the golf course. So, so I don't think it's outside of the realm of like historically feasible. And if we're, if we need to expand the signage budget to include the golf course, um, I'm interested. I would rather do that than save money there, because, so say, say it's forty thou- seven thousand dollars. Then we've got the Mineral Belt Trail Committee who's interested in contributing to our efforts
Mm-hmm.
up to thirty thousand dollars.
That's not set in stone. We've just talked.
No, I'm just, this is all just discussion.
Yeah.
That potentially brings the cost of this implementation closer to twenty thousand dollars.
And would that thirty be a donation to the county, or maybe we start a savings account for a new snow cap in ten years or something like that? With the money that we're gonna generate?
I think that's probably the better thing to do, cause I don't know how you would make a donation. I'd actually have to really look at that. I'm not sure.
Donation to the fuel, or?
Well, that's, that's, and that's part of why this presentation exists.
Okay.
This part here, so. Cool.
Does that, I mean, that sounds like the cheapest option for the best quality that is the most consistent. And I understand that it's like going to be bureaucratically complicated.
I would like to ask for us to really track how well this goes, because it's not the first time we found ourselves here, and I'll just be very clear. The frustration from staff is they've really researched and reached out to get real numbers.
Yeah.
From people who are professionals in the field we're about to do this in.
Yeah.
I would imagine it's not Adam's first time presenting this for it to get vetoed or other opinions, and then it doesn't go well. And then they're the people that's, that are county employees who are lazy, who don't do anything well, who can't manage the mineral belt. And if they're gonna be the people attached for it, which they will be, you make decisions, we do it.
Yep.
We get screamed at. I wanna be really clear, if we try this, I would like to be collecting data, and if it doesn't go well, I'd like to ask to go a different direction the next time. Because it's unfair.
Nordic Pulse, Nordic Pulse will be a good tool for that.
To currently, to, to, you know, to do the, to do what we've done in the past, and then it doesn't go well, and then we'll be the people blamed for it, no matter what decision you guys make. So I do want to collect data. I do wanna make sure, hey, if this really works, wonderful. But if it isn't, then I want the opportunity to revisit what a better path forward is, because it's not, we're, we're not saying, hey, this is what we think it will be, because we wanna see it not succeed, which has been communicated. What we, what we're saying is, we don't wanna be the people in front of the firing squad when it doesn't go well, because we are for a decision that we didn't necessarily provide data for or make.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, whatever we choose, if it doesn't go well, we wanna have the opportunity to relook at it and really set ourselves up to be successful instead of.
That sounds good. I appreciate you sticking up for the staff. That's important. So do we need an option B? Talk about an option B, if, if this snow cap, which I suspect is gonna be fine, or maybe we talk about that later, or?
I think we see where we're at, and then we come back to it, but we gotta do it pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't miss the opportunity to have a plan, which it sounds like happened last year, and then people were very furious.
A hundred percent.
So I just wanna say, whatever we do, let's make sure, if it doesn't work, we address it and come back.
Here's just my last idea, and then I'll let Adam go. Just play me, just play me. Everybody write a letter like it's a full-off. I'm serious. I'll take the heat, you guys. I'm serious.
I think you, I think it's already there, Matt. Like, whether grooming works or not, it's gonna be on you, babe.
I'll take it gladly.
I know you will, and I love that.
There's a dozen that you're the man to take the heat.
Sorry, it doesn't work that way.
Name me specifically, I'll take it.
Well, we definitely signed up for that, yeah.
I'll take it in safe words.
It's really a true decision, so.
I mean, if there's, Adam, are you, in this presentation, are you gonna give us a little bit of context for what happened last year? Because we're three new folks. We weren't part of these discussions.
Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna, I wasn't specifically gonna talk about that, but talking about when we talk about things like the funding and the Mineral Belt Trail Committee and
Yes, yes.
all of that stuff, I'm just going to lay out like in plain, plain as possible English.
Yeah.
How like, how they're all kind of one in the same.
Let's do it.
So.
Good to know. I mean, this whole, after what I just said, honestly, I had this little flag in my head that was like, ooh, this sounds a little bit like us sneaking out in the middle of the night and like gluing tiles up on the skate park. Like, it's a little bit of, um, hodgepodgey, how can we save the most money? And I do think that like that ingenuity is valuable, especially in this community, and also we can't do that all the time. So I do hear that there's quite a flavor of that in what we just talked about.
Mm-hmm.
And that has, it's actually something we need to move away from. So, sorry.
And that, no, at the end of the day, that's probably my, I mean, as the person who, aside from the community members, in terms of staff, I have been dealing with this exact issue every single year for four years.
Yeah, totally.
So I am the, and I understand, like, many community members have dealt with this a lot longer.
Yeah.
So like, how dare I talk, but I'm, I'm, this is the, the, the never-ending punching bag, and again, so much of our community is oral history, rather than like, here's what the actual federal documentation says, so.
Let's do it.
Just, just looking to clear some of that up. Um, so yeah, the origin, origins of the Mineral Belt Trail, right? It came out of, the concept emerged when talking about the California Gulf, uh, California Gulf Superfund Site. Um, and reuse of the historic rail beds, as well as a community-driven vision. And a lot of this work was driven by Howard Tritts, who is working at Lake County Government in the assessor's office, as well as Mike Conlin, um, and his firm, um, to help kind of work on this community vision. Uh, and those are, those all lead to links that have the documentation that sort of showcases it, but ninety-three is the concept. Ninety-eight is the MOU that's created. Uh, two thousand is when the Mineral Belt Trail was opened. And two thousand five plus is when mid, the winter grooming began. And that began basically conversations with the Mineral Belt Trail Committee and the Lake County Government. And it was very much the conversations in a room and not necessarily formal MOUs. Um, and so that's why a lot of this stuff becomes oral history, um, rather than what does the letter of the law say? And then, uh, twenty twenty-five now, we're kind of at this place of future planning. And, you know, I will, I will speak to, so this again, this sort of is the easement that was quick claim deed to Lake County. Ownership of easements have been transferred to Lake County government via quick claim deed. This is in the EPA's final ruling for California Gulf. Um, and we do have a copy of that quick claim deed that I was able to access through the clerk and recorder's office. So Union, um, there was sort of, uh, the MOU is between Lake County EPA and Union Pacific. Union Pacific funded the subbase culverts and asphalt. Um, there's a breakdown of how the funding came together for the original creation of the, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee. But at the end of the day, the responsibility of the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, not only was it sort of part of a superfund site cleanup effort and a, a really, really amazing, um, uh, sort of case study for the EPA when it came to how you can sort of make it a public good and a public benefit. Can't say enough about how awesome that was. And the Mineral Belt Trail Committee kind of came out of citizens that wanted to be engaged and help Lake County Government come up with a plan for this, but at the end of the day, there's a breakdown of sort of who contributed what funding. But the ultimate responsibility for the Mineral Belt Trail did fgle on Lake County Government. Um, and the, the land was quick claimed deeded to Lake County. Um, you, you guys kind of all know this stuff, but this is the sort of features that were sort of laid out in terms of what the Mineral Belt Trail had to have. Um, and one of the things that's not in here is that if there would be public events on the Mineral Belt Trail, that it could not be fully closed off to public. That is one other stipulation when we think about events in the future and cost recovery. Um, and, um, again, it was a remediation, part of a remediation implementation and kind of a really, um, good one. And at the end of the day, it is a cornerstone of recreation and heritage tourism. And, um, we can't speak enough about how important this asset is. No one is debating that at all. But at, when we think about it, the maintenance and responsibility and the ownership is on Lake County Government, and that is Public Works, Pro, CMC, Mineral Belt Trail Committee. Those are the players who are sort of taking care of it daily. Um, but as a function, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, they do have bylaws. But again, the, the fund, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee Fund that has the lion's share of that savings is a fund within Lake County Government. But it is, it is, they do have their own bank account that they set up separately through, um, the, um, what's it called? Lake County Community Fund, as a way to more easily access their own money.
Mm-hmm.
Because when Howard was more heavily involved with Lake County Government, and even after he retired, it was really easy for him to come in here and just make sort of deductions from the fund and sort of work with the money. That ultimately sits within Lake County Government as a separate fund. That was set up because he worked at the assessor's office and they were able to set that up, but it is money within Lake County Government. And so the point of it is, yes, it is a fund that's dedicated to the Mineral Belt Trail. No one is disputing that. Um, but the Mineral Belt Trail Committee has all along been set up as a way to sort of advocate, think of it like the Rec Council. It's been a way to sort of advocate to Lake County Government, hey, how do you spend CTF funds? Hey, how do you spend the Mineral Belt Trail Committee funds? How do we actually operate this thing? So.
So it's actually a fund managed by the BOCC?
That's correct.
And informed by the Mineral Belt Trail Committee?
That's correct.
Also like the Airport Advisory Board?
That's correct.
Or the Tourism Panel?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And so when we think about and talk about, and, you know, it's just really important for all of us to understand that is the context for, it's, it's very much the same. But unlike the Tourism Panel, which is actually, um, legislated by the Colorado Constitution, this is just, within our community, we've had the Mineral Belt Trail Committee as a way to sort of help inform. Because the CTF funds, those funds are coming from the Lotto, right?
Right.
So that's like, uh, what's it called? A jurisdictional, what's the word? When you're, when you're required to have it. Um, what's that word?
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Yeah, the point is, is it's required by law, whereas this is more like a, um, it's nice mandated. This is not, this is unmandated.
But then who manages the funds that are donated to?
Howard Tritts, so.
Yeah, and that's not in our Lake County Government, that's separate.
Yeah. Yeah. So the one.
I guess they're separate. I'm just wondering, what, you know how, you know how GOAL has a, GOAL has a little bank within the community fund?
Yep, totally.
That's managed by GOAL, and therefore the county and the BOCC.
Yep.
How different is that with the Mineral Belt Trail?
It's just that the Mineral Belt Trail Committee is the only one that had, like, makes decisions on that money.
Okay.
So, but the reason why they set up the Lake County Community Fund, Fund, is because they were having so many issues with trying to access the fund within the county, that they wanted a really easy way to have money automatically donated in via the website or these QR codes.
Yeah.
And they sort of were following the lead of like a goal, where it's like, okay, have a
Yeah.
bank account that's just easy to access.
Cause you can't donate money to a, a government, yeah. And that's like the library gets donations and they live with like
Yeah, totally, community fund.
Yep, yep. But again, that, the decisions about that money are made through the Mineral Belt Trail Committee.
That's the difference, so.
Yeah. And so, um, last year, last October, so a year ago, I received a call from Howard Tritts. Uh, and Howard said, hey, I am starting to get older, and in the, since two thousand, since I started this work, I have had fifty members, fifty board members on the Mineral Belt Trail Committee.
Wow.
And, um, the only two people who have been there the whole time were himself and Loretta McLeahney. And after the last work session we had about grooming, Loretta McLeahney stepped down, because she said the frustration and the negativity around this grooming conversation was too much for her to bear. She was done. So she said, I don't like, you all, good luck, is basically what she said. And so I went back to Howard, and I actually, at that time, communicated with Smokey about this, and this is in the early of twenty twenty-five is when I talked to you about this as well, Matt, is like, Howard is really trying to find a way to make this all more sustainable, less contentious, and really understand like a long-term plan. That feels less like fighting that flares up every year.
Mm-hmm.
So that's part of my frustration, where it's like, I really wanna understand sort of exactly who has ownership and who is on the line to make all these things happen, and it is us. And so I made a vow to Howard. I was like, I will not sort of be coming forward to Howard with like, hey, here's our plan moving forward until I feel like we have a really solid plan.
Mm-hmm.
Till we really understand what that looks like. And I understand there's so much nuance, and there's so much we have to like think about over time, especially when it comes to budget, but at the end of the day, I would just love for us to honor Howard and honor the Mineral Belt Trail in a way that feels sustainable and feels like the way that, um, everyone's winning. You know, we can lift up this asset and find it as a way to feel like a really good cost recovery model. Um, but also honor, you know, somebody who has dedicated so much of his time and effort to this thing and is looking for a way to pass the torch, that again, if it's, if it's you and Smokey that are gonna be Howard within the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, that's great. Let's, let's talk about that. But Howard really wants to understand sort of what the future looks like, and was sort of looking for a little bit of guidance on how the county could maybe be a little bit more involved with sort of making a long-ranging plan for the Mineral Belt Trail.
Mm-hmm.
Is Loretta back?
She's back. We should get her to stay.
That drama revolved around one person, and we've eliminated that one person.
That's a funny thing to hear from a government official.
Well, we haven't eliminated it, we've neutralized it.
Can I, so, we're so powerful.
Can I add to this conversation that one of the things I had asked Adam about was helping research, like, do we own this? We do. So I was like, if we don't, we need to figure this out, because I would really love to see that we work towards being able to actually host events that help pay for, so like a race series, a Nordic race series, or whatever we wanna come up with. There could be a couple events every winter. The event is like an entry event to actually offset some of the cost of running for the mineral belt, but not charging people for normal daily use. And so I would love to see us get creative about what could we do to make sure that the mineral belt is actually usable and we can actually cover the cost of the grooming piece or a new piece of equipment? How can we work to make it actually fund itself, so we're not taking general fund dollars to fund something that's really fun for our community, but is not something used by statute or required to do, there are things we're required to do first. This is a nice-to-have, right? And something that we actually really all enjoy. So how can we try to offset some of the costs of doing this by coming up with creative ways? And I don't think we're gonna be able to pull this off year one while we figure out grooming, but to start to have a plan for how do we have a consistent, maybe it's every event a year that helps fund a big chunk of actually taking care of the Mineral Belt Trail?
Yeah, and just as an example, we were approached last, twenty twenty-three, we were approached by the World Triathlon. The folks who run the World Triathlon Series, they wanted to host in Leadville. Um, and at the time, um, they were interested in talking about CMC and the Mineral Belt Trail as like a partner in, in it. And that series is basically you, um, you snowshoe, you ski. And that series is basically you, um, you snowshoe, you ski and you bike. And, uh, long story short, it ended up going to Breckenridge. And, um, they hosted it there last year and they had such an exceptional time there. Um, and it was so turnkey that they're gonna do it again there. So like, it's just an example of if we have the products and we have our ducks in a row and we have a plan that doesn't feel like putting tiles up in the middle of the night, then we can go after world-class things and make a world-class destination. But without the product, we can't, um, cart for the horse.
I appreciate this. This is really helpful. I'm gonna answer questions I didn't even know I had. Well, I hear, I, I hear the desire for a consistent product. And I appreciate all of the research that you all have done. And to Candace's point, it's not statutory. And so there are.
Statutory, that was the one thing.
Statutory. There are certain things that I, I don't wanna have this investment conversation outside of the larger context of our entire budget. And the things that are statutory and the things that do, that are required of us to help keep people alive and safe. And so I think that's one of the reasons why I feel more comfortable with the napkin math and a little bit of tile gluing. And I'm sorry that it's been happening every year. And I think that this new BOCC might be leaning in the direction of, of really trying to piece it together to do a consistent product that can be proven, that can gain, gain some momentum. And then investing in some of these really well-researched options. That's kind of where I'm leaning and I'm, I've, I'm, I'm sorry that it's, that it's not gonna be. It's probably not gonna be option one for me.
I'd just like to wrap it up by saying, yeah, it's optional and it's a nice to have, but it's also an economic development driver. And we talk so much about economic development, we're gonna bring a, who can come to town, who can do this, you know, all this stuff. And it's all just a lot of talk, a lot of ideas where this is truly an economic driver. Hungry skiers coming to have lunch, staying in hotels, telling their friends. So yeah, it's a nice to have, but it's also a huge economic driver. Cross-country skiing and Nordic skiing and fat biking, it's a growth industry. Especially as the Alpine skiing gets too expensive for people to go. They still wanna come here. They still wanna do something outside. So I would just like to add that and close with it, cause it's like.
I think we all agree and that's why we're, we're of the mindset, if, if taping of tiles works. We could, same thing. But we wanna have the discussion again. We don't wanna be like, oh, well, we did that in a pinch, but we could do it better. And I do think we do wanna eventually be able to really host things that we wanna host because we're not just taping it together. So I will say, I'd love to revisit this if the taping it together is what we pick around one.
Yeah.
That's what I'll add.
Well, and I, I just, I, I also wanna say like we are, I'm in favor of option two. Modified option two, which is the FT, which I think helps with, that is not just a solution for grooming. It helps with quite a few things. And it's more about the asset acquisition that I think is the taping or gluing. And I'd rather use what we have. Cause it's a great, it's a good product and if Michael can vouchsafe that it is in good condition, I wanna trust that and move forward. And do it well and get the person on board.
I agree.
Yeah.
I disagree with the taping and the top, and the duct tape, but I think that's.
It's just a phrase, cause we've been.
And it's a metaphor.
We've been talking about the tiles.
And Andy will watch this later and he's gonna need a metaphor.
He is.
I took his metaphor.
Yeah.
Well, should we wrap this up? Everything done?
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming. Oh my gosh.
Should we close this sucker?
Do it.
Yes, sir.
Before thirty-two, this work session is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.
We're team, Matt. There we go. Sorry, like you.